So we'll start with the marijuana ordinance discussion. And Mr. Sapiens will be presenting. Bird has some things to hand out to us. I'll hang over you.
We're passing out. One, I think it was page six of the work session packet had a table that was a little smaller. So I printed it on eleven by seventeen for you. And included in this packet are also some demonstrative maps showing some of the different concepts that were looked at in terms of setbacks for marijuana buffers. And we'll go over those here momentarily, but I want to make sure everyone's found.
I want to thank you for making the. Thank you.
It helps me too.
Um, so we're here after there's been a lot of meetings to talk about marijuana and potential options. This started back in December. Staff came aboard with a proposal to allow the board of adjustments to offer to approve variances for the setbacks that are there. Passed by the voters. Through discussions of that, right through a number of meetings, we got to February fourteenth work session. It was at that meeting that it seemed that the board would speak for the board, but we've got some direction to look more holistically at the ordinance. And, you know, rather than just changing one thing, maybe look at a variety of options that can meet the goals of the town regarding marijuana. At that meeting, caps on marijuana stores were discussed. I think there are a lot of administrative issues and it seemed the board didn't favor that approach. But wanted us to come back with a bright proposals or some proposals which we put together here. We are in the option before you were moving away from that proposal to allow the board of adjustments to approve variances and making those binding on the local licensing authority. That option was really there because we needed, we felt we needed some procedure. We needed some process, I think, to create some clarity, but it would, in some ways. Because it allows another board to vary the setbacks and maybe reduces the clarity for others in the town. We think there are better ways. We think there are more direct approaches, more intentional decisions that the board can make and the town can make about how marijuana might operate in the town along to to implement the ordinance from 2021. And through all those meetings and after that April the fourteenth meeting, you know, Cody and I have talked about this a lot over that time. And that's how we got here today. Let me check my notes. Wanted Cody to put together a variety of options and kind of give you the menu of choices that are available. Past discussions have been, really, we talked about a single policy approach. And instead, we thought it'd be better to give you the whole range and demonstrate how that could have even been put together. And that's where Cody comes in with his planning expertise.
Thanks, Dan. The other piece to it that I want to overlook was the considerations that were underway as part of the broader effort to update the zoning map for the town. That started over a year ago. And that included some of the transitional properties that were previously commercial. Some of them got rezoned to C three, others were rezoned to residential, which influenced the buffer setback distances as well as some considerations around the P public zone district properties and how that was applied consistently throughout town. The zoning map has been adopted, as you all know, and that allowed us to provide a better level of clarity instead of guessing at some of those buffer boundaries and what changes to those just or buffer distances might look like. We've been able to to provide some more context on the example, example maps here that clearly illustrate our current zone. So the, as Dan alluded to, when I look at this scenario, we're definitely trying to honor the intent of the board, the intent of the voter voters in applying setback buffers and distances. But what I was really hearing at the meetings was we're looking for for some different option other than just a singular change. And so what I tried to do was go through and think of what are the different tools in the toolbox that we have available that we can use? What can we change and what would the reasonable expectations of those changes look like? And so I tried to consolidate that into a very text heavy table. I apologize, apologies for that, but it got down to one page.
It's so good.
It's, yeah, I, I, it's intended to provide just an objective. These are the things that we can think about. And my initial planning considerations for what would we expect that to do? And then we put some examples together based on those strategies I call them in the staff report. So referring to page six of the packet, the, I kind of grouped these into categories. One of the tools that we, that we have that we probably need to do is create some clarity on a couple of the topics that were discussed by the board. A lot of that work, I think, has really been done. It hasn't been adopted, we've talked about it. Including the neighborhood needs and desires and the hearing process for the licensing authority, creating some clarity around the zoning, making sure that the R three is included. When the, when the voters were referring to the ordinance a number of years ago, the R three category wasn't currently in use and it didn't make it in that ordinance. And now we're using it, so it needs to be included to honor that intent for all residential categories. And we also heard that the, one of the applicants or a couple of the applicants that presented, your definition for schools isn't very clear. I think we need to clarify that definition, one way or the other, on the topic of home daycares and whether those are included or not included. The way staff has interpreted it is the language, does any licensed daycare? And that in our minds is clear that that includes in that or is included in that definition with the two thousand foot buffer currently. Others have argued that that's not the case. I think we need to provide some clarity and I presented a couple of options for how that clarity could be provided. The next tool in the toolbox, we can reduce setbacks. That was recommended by a number of applicants. It was discussed by the board, maybe even some, some preference shown to, can we reduce the setback that would provide additional flexibility? So we don't have a singular user in town where it's been pretty well vetted through a number of applicants that we don't have another location currently that would meet all of the setback requirements. We understood from the board, maybe there's a desire to provide some additional flexibility. And next, as a planner, I thought to myself, well, if we reduce the setback to provide more flexibility, that could open up a broader area more than was intended. So how do we get back to limiting the number of total licenses in town? And my suggestion is, well, we can also increase a setback or multiple setbacks to make sure that the distributed coverage of those different application types are still commensurate, commensurate with the size of our community. But using the setbacks to achieve that instead of setting a cap or a limit that would create a complicated lottery system and a lot of unfairness to our applicants and our residents. So we provided a couple of different options for ways we can increase the different setbacks, as different kind of leverage in the toolbox that we can pull. We also included a couple of other things in here that we heard and I tried to vet those and provide some planning context to whether those work or don't work and not without any recommendations. Tried to present what those options were. We heard from some of the applicants, why don't you include additional zone districts where marijuana retail stores are allowed use? And some different ideas on what that might look like. That's obviously told the board could consider, we haven't really heard that direction, but we wanted to conclude it to be completely objective. As well as if you keep it where C three is the only zone district where it's allowed, which is your current rule. And changing of the zoning for the P public districts, in my opinion, that has largely been vetted and accomplished in these own map updates to where additional action wouldn't be necessary. But we threw it on here because it was certainly discussed and we didn't want to leave something out. We mentioned the caps, which was a tool that we think the board has moved past. And then I threw out another option of, we understood that the intent of the board was to not put words in mouths, but kind of understood that there was a desire to keep marijuana retail stores located somewhat close proximity to I twenty five corridor. Maybe not all through town, but we're, we're expecting traffic from other communities to come here to avail themselves of those, those retail establishments. Maybe we don't want that traffic driving down local roads. Let's keep it close to the highway. One of the tools we could use is in addition to your current buffers and setback distances could also require a maximum distance away from the highway for those establishments. So those, these are kind of tools in the toolbox. There are other planning tools out there that I thought about and didn't include in this list simply because they're quite a bit bigger task. And I'm certainly happy to go into those, but I didn't provide the context in this report because there are a lot more steps than the board can take on in one meeting. So we tried to keep it kind of condensed to the things that have been talked about, discussed and thrown out basically. Use any combination of these things to achieve the board's desired effect.
And before Cody gets into kind of the various options, kind of some packages of these different tools, I wanted to discuss some issues I've found recently with regard to in-home daycares. As Cody mentioned, there have been some. Interpretations of our code that in-home daycares may or may not be covered by the definition of school that's in our code. And that's, it's a two thousand foot setback from schools. Our marijuana ordinance that was adopted defines a school as a public or private preschool, including licensed daycares, elementary schools, middle schools, et cetera. And there is an argument out there that because it's schools, including public and private preschools and in-home daycare, wouldn't be considered a school. It is a licensed daycare, but it is not a school. You know, I'm not sure, that holds a ton of water. It certainly is not our interpretation of that, of that section. However, I think there are some real practical impacts of this that I wanted to bring your attention. One is that in-home daycares are not licensed by the town of Wellington. This means that the town is not involved in an in-home daycare being set up. For practical purposes, this means a applicant for a marijuana dispensary could go to the town, come to the town of Wellington, ask for a zoning and setback approval. The planning director could work with that applicant, review the location, sign off and say, there is no daycare anywhere within the two thousand feet of that. That applicant can then continue with their application, submitting all the paperwork to the states, you know, paperwork to the town, going through all of that. And then discover the day before the hearing before the local licensing authority that an in-home daycare. The town, of course, wouldn't know this, the town wouldn't have anything to do with it. But that's a lot of uncertainty for a business to go through that process, applying for marijuana licenses, minimum thousands of dollars for the application fees that go to the state and go to the town. But we couldn't even give them heads up that that might be the case because essentially we don't know. The only tool that's in the towns at our disposal to know about in-home daycare, so that's a technical term in the state is a family childcare home, is that right? Is a website that's operated by the state called Colorado Shines. Colorado Shines, we have contacted them, we've talked to them a number of times to make sure that it is up to date. Because we need to know that it's actually accurate if we're making decisions about where a business can be located, both that if an app, a license is given for an in-home daycare, it shows up there. And if a license is surrendered or terminated, that it's removed from that, so that we have accurate up-to-date information. But that website is, to put it mildly, not great. Just in my most recent experience, I was looking for, I was looking to see where in-home daycares were in town. And so I went to the website and I like to think that I'm a pretty technologically set person. And I typed in Wellington, Colorado, and all daycares within all licensed childcare facilities of any kind within one mile. I said, Wellington, Colorado, one mile. Eleven licenses given. I know there's more than that. There's actually seventeen licenses in the town of Wellington. So you actually have to say Wellington within five miles. But even if you say that, it's not good. I actually had a lot of trouble finding licensed daycare centers on that site that I knew existed. And the problem that I have with that after, since I had trouble, I know others might. The problem, real problem I have is while Cody is very familiar with that site and can find it. If he's not in the office, if somebody submits that form to us and they don't know all the tricks of this rather poorly decided website. What happens if a deputy in Cody's office signs that verification form using the site and provides wrong information? Now we've told an applicant, move forward, go finish your application, send those thousands of dollars to the town of Wellington, to the state, fill out all the forms, jump through all the hoops. And then we come back and go, oh, we, we, we looked at the website. But it's also happens the other way, where applicants come to the town and spend a lot of Cody's time filling, asking for verifications for their site. And they say, I went to the website, there's absolutely nothing. And Cody said, oh, you, you didn't, you didn't click on the this and the that. Here's the, here's a daycare within two thousand feet. So applicants, it's actually really challenging for accurate applicants to know whether they can open a shop. I'm more concerned with the fact that it's also challenging for the town to accurately determine where these shops are. And that's because we have, we just have nothing to do with it. We don't license them at all. They can open at any time without notice, the town without any information coming to us. Commercial daycares are certainly different. A commercial childcare center or preschool where the town involved a lot more. So it doesn't just happen overnight, but for the town and for applicants, really, family childcare homes can open overnight in the middle of a process. It's really hard to track. So that's just kind of a recent experience as far as, it's a real challenge of that. So I'll highlight that issue of experience.
Do we know how quick the turnaround time is of them inputting a new daycare or kicking out a?
That's one thing that we, before, when we were looking at this about how to implement it, Cody and I, actually, we, we have talked to the folks that, that operate Colorado Shine two up. If a license is approved at the state, how long before it's entered in? And it's within hours. I mean, it is actually a very, very up-to-date page. The information that goes in is great, it's just hard to gather. It's sometimes can be a bit of a challenge to gather that information, so.
In addition to the, the challenges with using that website as a tool and relying upon it and the uncertainties that it creates. And also if they're out there too, this is one of my planner thoughts was when we're writing legislation for the town, applying that a buffer setback to a target that could move. And you know, home daycare could open, that could close, it could open a day after someone submitted their application, I remember doing it day two. And that information is there suddenly where it wasn't the day they applied. And it just creates uncertainty. And from a legislative standpoint, we're writing a set of rules that everyone in town has to apply to. Residents don't know whether that daycare is going to stay and if they're within that two thousand foot buffer at their home and rely upon that. Applicants don't know if there's a change. Town staff doesn't know when there's a change. It's, it's very hard to be predictable in writing a set of legislations when the target moves around, it can kind of go. And so I feel that there's an element there, not only from the practicality of using the tools available to us, but also in writing legislation for how those rules should be implemented throughout town isn't going to be consistent for, for any given length of time. And that's a concern of mine from enforcing to those rules.
Are at-home licensed at-home daycares required to have a business license in the town of Wellington?
The, a home daycare is required to have a home occupation license, but not ever, there's no trigger at the state level to say, oh, don't forget to get your home occupation license.
No, a licensed one, not an at-home, but a licensed at-home daycare.
I don't think there's a significant difference between those two terms. The state defines a lot of different levels of what is a home daycare and I won't dive into all the nuances and details of that. But a licensed childcare facility would be a home occupation that has to obtain a town home occupation permit. There are some other categories in the state that don't require licenses. If you're watching two or fewer and they're a family friend or some, there's a couple of different categories there. But the home occupation is difficult for us to enforce because the state removed the preemptive local legislation over anything that involves a home daycare. We can't treat them differently than any other residential use. And so there's not really a good trigger for us to know when a home daycare has been licensed unless we happen to find it or they happen to come in for that home occupation permit. It's a pretty difficult thing for us to know when that changes.
So question, as part of their licensing process with the state, do they have to show that they have at home? They do not have to show the state that they've gotten that.
Correct. And as Cody mentioned, the state doesn't rely to my, it's, it's.
So state doesn't care.
The state doesn't care.
Got it.
Cody, I have a quick question for you. Wasn't there also some recent legislative changes to business licenses in general that retracted them to where if they weren't required anymore? If they're, they're doing business in town, but they're not physically located in town? So that could make using business licenses as a requirement in general or trying to, I don't know, track these things not super accurate. So yeah, we're using the, you're correct on the business license piece, but we would require them, a home daycare would have the home occupation license, so two separate, two separate items. And since the state doesn't make any requirement, we have no way of tracking it.
So is there any way we can get them to register?
Because the state has basically preempted all.
Well, I know they do, but I mean, for our records, can we make that kind of one of the prerequisites for that?
They don't need it.
I know they don't need to, but I mean, if we put in there, if they need to register to possibly be used for these standards here, maybe these people would register at that point.
I think one of the challenges that in-home daycares have currently is, like they were mentioning, there's a ton of fees and classes and all kinds of things that they have to try and do. A business or community. And if they, like, somebody is moving here, let's say, in Port Colons or London or whatever, and trying to open up their daycare here. I mean, that could potentially discourage them if we're continually adding on additional licensing requirements for all of these businesses.
Well, I mean, on this one here, if we could just have, one of the things that the town would like them to do would be register. And that way we can use that for factoring in this type of a guidance here.
Well, the town already wants that, right?
What?
The town already wants that.
I would think they would, but I mean, you must not have made it real knowledgeable that that is something that we would like to have.
The, the challenge is not so much the, that we make it a requirement or that we don't. The challenge is that we don't know who the operators are to contact them, to tell them that this is a requirement and they may not know it because they're not looking for that. It's the same thing we hear in my department all the time. I didn't know I needed a building permit for that one.
Okay, so right now we got what, ten, you said, registered?
There are seventeen licenses.
Seventeen, but we have ten that we know about, right?
No, there, no.
There's seventeen. I mean, in one search on the website, it comes up with a weapon with, with another search account.
Okay, so, so we actually know what they are and where they're at.
We think so.
Okay. And if they haven't registered, if we don't know, we can't use that particular daddy anyway, correct? I would think.
It to be a daycare, they need to be licensed.
Right.
Through the state. Through the state.
Right.
But having a local license doesn't mean that they're licensed through the state and having a, it's challenging to track.
Right.
We're trying to say.
And, and the challenge, not only to track, but also to, we don't know that there's one out there if they don't register with us. How do we know when they open if they don't contact us?
And maybe in the wording and what we have in the marijuana requirement, we have a registered license. So that we at least got some type of a guideline to go by. And if they don't register, we can't use it.
To have, they must have a local business license.
Right, or at least register that you have business or that you are licensed, just so we know what our guidelines are. I. I know it could be a pain, but then it throws the burden back on the daycares if they were wanting to be used in this calculation. And if they don't use, if they don't register, they're not going to be used in the calculation to determine whether the marijuana license are adequate for that area. And they can't come back and say, hey, we're here.
I, I think I kind of follow what you're saying, trustee. And I wonder too, one of the thoughts that's come into my mind is again, the consistency piece. If, if we're writing legislation, is that going to be a consistent standard that can be relied upon by everyone in the community to know which ones are registered or not registered? And if they don't register and we don't use it, how is everyone supposed to know? Is it creating a consistent, predictable environmental operating thing? And I think there'd be some challenges with that.
Yeah.
But I, I would like to move on to the options.
Trustee, do you have any center?
Hey, the first one is in-home daycares are home occupations in that. They're businesses that are intended to operate within a residential zone. So that's the purpose of them, they live within residential. So the nature of these businesses are very significantly different than a commercial preschool, like a creative kids corner, which is like a commercial business. And like a school, Rice, Ice Stone, Wellington Middle High School. An in-home daycare is a completely different operation. And the purpose of it operating within a residential district is that it's, it's intended to be able to operate within and not disrupt residential properties, right? So in my mind, I don't think that these are related completely. I don't think it's one for one. I don't think it's in-home daycare equals Rice Elementary School. I don't think that's how it's supposed to be, supposed to operate. It is supposed to operate within residential. So anything that applies to residential should indeed, for every other standing, for any other purpose, would apply to in-home daycares. So I do want to point that out. So I, I'm not quite sure if the in-home daycare should maybe classify or be considered as a residential setback. Because in my mind, that's why it's supposed to be operating within the residential district. So that was one. Two, we've received a ton of public comment regarding the concern of daycares being included within private or private preschools. A lot of people were under the impression originally that that was there. And that was kind of something that changed when we were doing negotiations, of course, for the wording of it. And that was something that was added, I think, for the purpose of being able to very clearly define. So I know there's a lot of public comment, a ton that's come before us in meetings of concerns of why that was included and why that's part of it. So that's another thing, we've heard a lot of public opinion. Three, we're showing it's really hard to do business in Wellington. It's incredibly risky. You can invest, you can buy property, you can do licensing and it might just be pulled away from you without anybody's knowledge or concern. That's not how I want businesses to approach Wellington. If they're coming and they're saying, I want to invest in your community and we said, let us help you. Oh, sorry, I know you've done thousands of dollars, you bought a million dollar property. Too bad now. Based on a thing that we can't clearly define or provide certainty around in-home daycares. Man, that makes Wellington look really bad for business. And if I were somebody who's trying to invest millions of dollars, I wouldn't feel comfortable to even approach that. And I don't think that's the reputation I want Wellington to have. So that really scares me and we've acknowledged that, that's come up already. And I already mentioned the schools are very different from in-home daycare. So I think we should really consider how in-home daycares play and really where it should be classified within which one of these setbacks. I mean, their business is intended to operate in residential zones. So I think that residential, that setback should likely apply. If that should be a larger setback, I don't know, but, but I just wanted to acknowledge that. Those are my three points.
So I think that my, I understand the challenges that staff has to go through and the applicants have to go through. I think for me, it comes down to what is the purpose of having a two thousand foot setback from the schools? Is it because there's all this stuff going on at schools? Is it because, no, it's because we don't want our children in close proximity to. Except that's the reasoning behind that. And so regardless of whether it operates in the exact same manner as a school or commercial daycare, I think the idea behind it is it's to keep our children safe. And so if we're looking at it from that perspective, because yes, children live in residential, they will go into commercial, but most of our children spend the majority of their day in a school or in a daycare. That's just, that's what we live in. And so that is where they spend a majority of their time. And so while I understand the challenges, I don't think that we should say, oh, it's too hard there for these children of ours that aren't in a commercial preschool, that are not in a public school, should not have the same protections we're giving to others. So I think from that perspective, when I look at it, the point behind that is we're saying, hey, we feel this is a setback that needs to be there to protect our kids. And yes, I understand the challenges for us. That's part of how the world works, right? We as adults have to do things to make sure that our children are protected. My life is a lot harder than my children's life because there are things I do for them to make sure they're protected, that they never felt that. So I understand their challenges, it does make life harder for us, you know, partners and community. But I think that that should be something that we're all willing to say that, hey, this is something our children are worth protecting.
Cody, I have a question for you. This map on top right here that lists the school two thousand foot buffer, zone P five hundred foot buffer, this one right here, is this the one we're looking at with the ordinance as is?
Yes, and we might want to jump into those maps so I can kind of orient you with what we're showing. In short, the, the one that you're holding up has the two thousand foot for schools, five hundred foot for public districts and two hundred foot for residential shows your current regulation. Except it doesn't have the current five hundred foot buffer around existing marijuana approved licenses. I have a separate map for that, all reference. I have a separate map for that all reference. Um, and there was another caveat I was going to put out there. Let me jump into the maps, because I think it will come up. And or using you with what we presented.
Got it. I had one additional question on that.
Sure.
So from my counting here, I'm looking at five available spots to open up. A shop for marijuana. Just from what I'm looking at this map right now.
Well, I'm, let's, let's maybe dive into the maps. Um, because I think the other, oh, the other, the other thing I was going to mention. This doesn't include any buffers or any of the in-home daycares, which takes up a very large area. We didn't map every single one of those because they continue to change and we want to make sure we're presenting you information you can rely on. Um, so in the, if, if you kept your maps in order, that's how I put them in a specific order. Um, the one on top, it's labeled two thousand foot school buffer, and that shows you the, um, the current. Uh, buffer distances with the two thousand foot in schools. Again, it doesn't include the, the existing approved license locations. It doesn't improve in, it doesn't include in-home daycares. The next map shows you, we took that same base layer for public and public districts and residential districts. And we, we heard potentially reduce the school, the separation from schools. And we threw out fifteen hundred feet, we just use round numbers, we used two thousand existing, we threw out fifteen hundred. So you can see what that would look like. The one, the very next map is a thousand feet. Um, so that's the only change in those three maps was the school separation from two thousand to fifteen hundred to one thousand. And then this is just intended to illustrate the kind of order of magnitude for what those changes would look like. The board could choose seventeen hundred feet or seven hundred and fifty feet, whatever the right number is, we're just trying to show you the relative impact. The next map, the fourth map, it's labeled seventy eight forty six street, five hundred foot buffer. That is showing the existing approved license location along Sixth Street just south of the hotel. And it's showing the five hundred foot setback that's currently in your regulations. The next one is the same map, but showing a thousand feet buffer around that same location. The reason we showed that was, you're looking at all the tools in the toolbox. If one, uh, se- our separation buffer was, was decreased. It might be proven to increase another one so that we don't have proliferation. Uh, in the same neighborhood of, of a whole handful of, of the same types of license applications. Um, so increasing the setback distance around the retail stores was one of the strategies. The next map is labeled base map. Um, this top base map is showing just your, your, uh, public zone district buffers and your residential buffers of the existing. Distances. The next one is the same map, but it's showing, um, increases of the residential buffer from two hundred to two hundred and fifty. And the public zone district buffer from five hundred to a thousand. Again, the intention there being, we're trying to illustrate if one setback distance is reduced to allows greater flexibility. It can be offset by providing increases in others, so increasing the residential buffer to protect those in-home daycares. Under the residential umbrella, um, playgrounds and schools and public facilities. Increase that separation instead of the five hundred feet, maybe it's a thousand where there's greater separation, um, from a marijuana retail store. Um, and then the last map, um, this one we put together, this, this shows the option C combination. That was included as one of the possible options in your, in your staff memo. Um, this, this last map, trying to try and put everything together just to illustrate what could be one of the potential outcomes. It's showing the, um, fifteen hundred foot, um, distance from schools. Um, showing a thousand feet from public properties, two hundred and fifty feet from residential properties. It shows the thousand feet separation from a, of the only approved marijuana licensed store here in town. Um, and this one again does not include any buffers for the in-home daycares. That was more than we were able to show for demonstrative purposes. So any questions on the example only maps, um, that we've included in the package tonight?
To understand the, the true impact that we're having on an ability for something to open up. Without having the already licensed childcare facilities on a map. So, cause from what I see here with what's presented, I see five locations, but I don't see. If those are limited, which, how the ordinance is written now. So I see five possibilities, also possibilities to zone inland that is currently for sale. But, so how I look at it now, it doesn't demonstrate that we're putting any difficulty on anyone to get a license. So it would be super beneficial to know where all of those restrictions lie. Cause as it sits right now, I can't use the business or it's, it's difficult for them to open as an excuse when. I can see multiple locations that they can open.
I'm curious of what those locations might be, because are you also taking into consideration that it's sound C three?
So one, you can look at far left of your map over by Glove Flower and Buttercup. You can look at this Vida, I'm pronouncing. Yes, so that one is where our current one application is already. If you look at off Cleveland's, the right side of Cleveland's. Um, just past the railroad tracks, that's not zoned that, but it can get. They can put in a variance to have a zoning change, correct? You can submit a variance for zoning change.
A, a rezone application can be submitted for any property.
So and then you go over to Piper Way. And there's a location over there, it's industrial, but you can submit again for that rezone. And that goes before whom? The planning commission or Board of Adjustments?
So the only thing I challenge that for is if we are looking for like actual potential locations. I don't think we could consider, because it is not certain for a reason to be approved. I mean, if we're looking at this map as this is the setbacks from what's available in current right now. I don't think we could consider anything unless in one of these categories where we're saying we're going to permit it in other zones. That we could say that those are viable locations, because they are under the ordinance for, because it's required PC three. I mean, if you guys want to talk about. Yeah, make our decision on top of that. Yeah, because there's so much involved in that.
I, I would throw out there too, the, the most applicants and staff, certainly, I think the public would reasonably expect that if it's not currently identified on the zoning map. As C three public, that's not going to be allowed. Obviously, the, the planning commission would make a recommendation and the board of trustees would make a decision on the potential rezone. I don't think you, it's not typical to base your assumptions on what will be allowed on a property that it's going to be rezoned to something different. It's always an option, but I don't think most people expect that it will change.
A lot of those have failed in the past.
And to trustee T's point, I mean, Piper, that, that is not in character of what C three is, right? C three is. Frontage road corridor property, right? So to put something that's C three up on the north side of town, that doesn't make sense, right? That's not within the character of what C three is.
Last question, if we, they did it way up on that north end of Piper, when that, you know, kind of defeat the point that. Um, Mr. Bird made about, you know, limiting the transit through town, like that was. To, you know, take people right, right past the schools. And then right up into that, that area. I mean, if we try and keep it like along that I twenty-five corridor. In those where the C three is intended to be, I think that that, you know, addresses that concern of trying to keep that traffic. In a, in a specific place in town. I mean, within the ordinance, there is requested setback or, you know, there are setbacks from, you know, one location to another. And I, my interpretation of that is there was not a desire to have multiple shops near each other. In which case, limiting that to a very specific corridor is really kind of going against that. So, I mean, as much as traffic wise, I feel like that makes sense. I feel like the voters likely did that with the idea that they couldn't be right next to each other, or the idea that they wouldn't be like. Here's our marijuana district, you know, so I, I feel like the intention was to spread them out.
Come on across town.
Yeah, well, I don't know, but, but I just. Well, and I like how staff included options for defining that through those marijuana buffers. I think that was a great way to try and address, because I mean, it's the same thing with like liquor stores and pawn shops, right? We don't want a whole chain of them next to each other.
Yeah.
But we do have to be reasonable about a distance, you know, in between. And then you have to keep in mind that the in-home daycares are not really enough, because those are kind of uncertain. So even if we are seeing locations that are C three, that are excluded from the setbacks, they're likely or could be. An in-home daycare that wouldn't have that. So when we're saying there's so many sites available, that's likely not the case if we're considering in-home daycares. And we also just identify that we're not supposed to assume. I, I think that's a decision we have to make, because it explicitly says in-home daycares are included at schools currently. Yeah.
And I would agree that that needs to be defined. I, I would feel they are, yes, it's a different type of daycare. There are differences in it, but I think that we, regardless of. Whether we decide to remove that or not, if it stays in, that does need to be clearly defined, so there's just, there's no question of that.
So I'm going to say I would like to see it stay in, but identify licensed. That's kind of.
I would like to see the first option that we had. I like that. You know, you're talking about the keeping it close to the interstate. Right now, we got such a cluster up there on the interstate anyway coming in. So, you know, we're, we really don't know what kind of impact this is all going to have on our city right now. Whether it's traffic, whether it's crime, whatever else. You know, I think we need to go slow. We can always change this down the road from this if we see we need to open it up a little bit more. You said it was a breathing document that we got that we can change. But I don't think we should just open up everything right now until we see the effects of what it's going to have on our community. And whether it's good or bad, you know, if it's a fantastic effect that they bring to it, then we can open it up for more. But I think we need to move slow. I know like Fort Collins, right now, they have actually limited. I think they got a cap. And, uh, moratorium on more marijuana places coming into town. So do we want to be their outlet now or, or what? Or do we want to do it and do it smart? Uh, so we don't have negative impacts that Fort Collins is now experiencing from a lot of it. So I don't know, I think we need to move slower. And, you know, we need, I can see want to be business friendly, but only to a certain extent.
I really worry about being like super pro business, except for if you're this business.
Well.
I really, I'm concerned.
This is a different business and a lot of them, I mean, we've got to be honest about that. And, uh, you know, maybe marijuana itself is not that bad, but some of the things that come along with it. Aren't necessarily good either. I mean, again, Portland, Oregon's a good example. You know, marijuana, marijuana may not be a bad product there, but all the stuff that came along with it has pretty much destroyed that city. So I mean, again, we, I think we need to, uh, be very cognizant of that. And move slow and we can always change it. Again, that's what we're doing right now. So do we want to change it and just let it all go wild, or do we want to be a consistent? And, uh, monitor it and make sure it's the best for our community.
So what changes you for, trustee Legion?
I'm for the very first one, myself.
Cause tonight is the night to, to get all this out, because the last thing we need is. No.
When you say the first one, are you referring to option A that's in the package tonight?
Right.
Okay, okay, that's what it'll be.
Right, and, and also too, it sounds like, you know, with the daycare. They can't open up after a marijuana place is already submitted.
They can, it doesn't.
They can. No, but they, they can, but they, it's not going to affect the marijuana license at that point. If they're not there, marijuana already applies and.
It will.
It will.
Until, until that marijuana establishment is in the ground and functioning.
I thought once it got applied for and approved.
What, once it is applied for and approved and they receive a license, a daycare opening up will have zero effect.
Zero effects on.
However, the one concern we have is that between the point of filing, some applicant submitting the verification form, which goes to the planning. Director to say this meets the setback requirements between them. And the hearing before the local licensing authority, there's a really a probably sixty day window in there. That a license could, a daycare could open up in that period, and that. Creates some uncertainty that we're concerned about.
And that might be some clarification we need at that point.
Right, and I can tell you, as we've talked about, we talked about it a little bit today, and I, I hear you, I'm, I'm get the marijuana piece. My fear is, is town staff having to rely on a third party to make decisions for businesses. That are investing so much money. I mean, if there was another way for us to track it, or I'm thinking, what if the website goes down? What if we lose internet connection? What if, I mean, this is our only way of accessing that information. And I, I tossed in my mind about how, how we could try to figure it out and required of them and to register with the town. But we just, we have businesses that aren't registered with us. I mean, we have, I mean, we just, we have no way of making it a requirement. So that's, that's, I wish, I'm trying to think of other ways that we could collect that data. Um, and not have to rely on a third party for that information. I don't know what that looks like.
There's other municipalities that run on these setbacks.
They don't run on.
And schools, correct?
No.
I can't find any others that have in, that have setbacks like this from in-home daycare.
In-home daycare is a specific to Wellington.
Uh, this was included in the original voting ordinance, right?
License, including licensed daycares was in, it was in the ordinance, that's correct.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but that's, so it's the, it's the in-home daycare piece that is, is specific for Wellington. And I. That, that's why I was reaching out to other municipalities, how do you handle this? What do you do? What, why do you have that? What was in the ordinance? Voters passed it, so we're just trying to figure out a way to make it, make it work.
Yeah, and I'm not seeing any of the three options here that turn it into like. Uh, all of a sudden the flooding or plethora, or, you know, a whole bunch, thank you, a bunch of them. You know, I think that all of these provide some sort of reasonable cap. In their own natural fluid way. I like that they put the distancing restriction on there from between marijuana shop to marijuana shop. Because in C three zoning, I mean, with all of these other buffers in place, that's going to significantly reduce the amount. Of options available. I mean, so I don't, I'm not really sure I can see where you're coming from, that all of a sudden we're going to have like marijuana shops opening.
Depends on how easy we make it.
I don't.
Start pulling.
I don't think any of these options are going to make it super easy. I, you know, I would imagine that realistically with all three of these options, there wouldn't be any more than two or three. That could reasonably open up.
Even with the first one. Right. So that's what pretty much both was approved initially, correct? The first one?
It is adding in the R three zoning, which there was no R three. The needs in, the neighborhood needs and desires was not in the ordinance. I think it fits with everything else we do in Wellington. But that is something that was not included, um, with the first one. I agree that it needs to be added. I still, I understand the concerns with the, um, Board of Adjustments. But I still stand that I, I do have an issue with one type of business not being allowed to utilize the variance process while others can.
Yeah.
So I would say that, I would say option A, I would support with the addition of number five. Which allows them to have the same appeal process as any other business.
And, but on that too, and I'm just like a devil's advocate, devil's advocate. With the, um, adjustments process for any other business that only applies to land use, it does not apply to any licensing. So that is not something that other businesses have a benefit of, that they would be excluded from. Cause they could potentially, you know, get the adjustment for land use, but that's not within the ordinance for licensing.
Do other businesses have a setback separately in their process that they have to go through outside of land use though?
No, this, this would just be applicable. Well, I mean, the land use, I'm sure the land is, well, and use is then approved for that use. But if that still doesn't meet the licensing requirements, they still can't open a business.
Well, that's a good, are there other businesses that have a. Well, that's a good, are there other businesses that have a full setback requirement to this business?
Oh, yeah, but that's.
Okay.
That's probably what the adjustments are seeing.
And, and yeah, and I can clarify that. We have, in our land use code, we have a lot of uses that are used by right within a zone district category. But then in, um, it's article five under the formatting, um, but it's, it's the use standards. So this isn't allowed use, but you also have to meet these criteria, which includes setbacks. Bars and taverns have a setback from residential property in certain zone districts. There's a, there's a number of those that, um, have additional use standards of that.
I misunderstood.
No, thank you. Okay, that was a question because I was like, I don't know, I haven't served on either of those boards. So it was just like, are there other businesses that also have to be separate setbacks from just their zoning? Okay.
Yeah, I guess in my, my point was that board of adjustments doesn't. Provide any. Um, approval for licensing purposes. I mean, like they're not, like if for some reason somebody wasn't able to do the, like a liquor license, that's not something that we manage the board of adjustments.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and I think to that point, that was one of the topics that came up in our previous applications that have been submitted to the town. And that was kind of what we learned was the board of adjustments granted or didn't in this case grant the variance to allow the use in the land use code. But even if they had, the licensing authority wouldn't have to honor that. So there's always going to be that disconnect. That's one of the things that needs to be clarified in this.
Got it.
Is if the variance process is going to be looked at, it has to include and the licensing authority. Has, you need to create that clarity that, that they also can look at.
So is there currently, so let's say at the bar, right? You have the setback requirements, five hundred feet, I, I, you know, say it's five hundred feet. I am four hundred and ninety-eight feet. Is there any current process that I can go through to, what I, I'm, I understand it's not board of adjustments, planning commission? Is there any process I can go through to request that that be considered, be changed?
The process would be to obtain a variance. Through the board of adjustments.
But you're saying that that wouldn't carry forward to the licensing authority? Cause we as the board of trustees, we're the licensing authority for liquor establishments. So even if the board of adjustments approved your four ninety-eight.
Yeah.
Then it would come to us as a board of trustees, which I understand we have.
I don't think that's correct, but I'll lean on Dan to clarify. The board of trustees is currently appointed to licensing authorities.
Not for, not for liquor, for liquor, we are the licensing authority.
I'm sorry.
I'm sure a lot of guests.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So I'm trying to say, so if the same situation were to happen, but for a liquor store, which we are licensing at the re. Board of adjustment says, yes, you're fine at four ninety-eight because it's two feet. That doesn't carry forward to the board of trustees because we then look at their license and we say, well, wait, you're at four ninety-eight, you're supposed to be five hundred.
But the five hundred feet in that case is in the, is in the land use code. So the variance actually would, it's a variance of the like, the land use and, and it.
So that would carry forward to their use then?
But that's still unless you were licensed, the, the board of trustees could issue the license.
But could we then turn and deny it because we say, well, you're not five hundred? Well, I mean, for that's because, because that's the question here. If, if the board of adjustment says you are approved to have this setback. Is the licensing authority then bound to say, hey, we honor that based on what you've got approved? If that's the same as what it would be for marijuana? I understand that the, the distances are different. So that's what I'm trying to say is if that variance you get from one business type carries forward to your licensing process. Which if you, what you've just said is true, it does. But if it does not, in that case, so then why would we not allow marijuana to go through the same process? Where if you get, right, if a liquor store gets the variance for the two feet. Marijuana store should be able to do the exact same thing. It shouldn't be, well, because you're marijuana, your variance doesn't count for the licensing authority, but the liquor store's variance does count. That's my concern. So.
I think that's a fair, pretty fair summary.
Okay.
And that setback does apply for licensing and land use for liquor?
That setbacks in our land use code.
Right, and I don't think it's in licensing.
It's not our license code, that's right. That's why the board of justice could write that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there is no, so, so it's not.
It's not, it doesn't.
It doesn't have a separate use setback outside.
It doesn't have a separate licensing setback.
Okay. Marijuana has a separate licensing setback separate from what is in the land use code.
It's in the same place that applies to both because of the way the ordinance was written, which is.
Okay.
Which is why we're looking for clarity here.
So would the clarity then be to establish that the setbacks are in the land use code? And are separate from the licensing? So the licensing then just looks at you, it was approved.
With, hang on, I just need to take this back two steps and make sure that I'm understanding what trustee Gator is presenting as someone who clearly understands this. So this whole time. Somebody could have applied for a variance for a setback to the board of adjustments. And we would not have to be having this conversation because I thought we already had this conversation once.
That, this was what trustee Gator is presenting is, or talking about is really what the ordinance that was in front of the board. Three times, uh, at this point, uh, beginning in December, which is to allow marijuana license, marijuana applicants to go to the board of adjustment to seek a variance from those distances.
Okay.
And then making the, if they receive a variance.
Carries forward.
Then that carries forward to licensing authority. At the moment, if they went to the board of adjustment for a variance, the board of adjustment can grant a variance in the land use code. But the local licensing authority still cannot issue a license if it's within the setbacks. So that's what's been, that's what we have proposed in the past.
So then the hangup there was, was that the appeal process was approved by the board or so wasn't? Like what was the hangup?
The, the hangup was, I guess, is it was in two different places. And so the licensing authority isn't necessarily bound by the.
Right.
By the, by the board of adjustments. And what we were, what is originally presented, what I've been an advocate of. If it gets approved by the board of adjustments, the licensing authority needs to respect that, that approval. So.
Okay, but then we're putting marijuana licensing approval preemptively in the hands of.
Oh, no, oh, no, no. They can still get denied for anything else on their list. It's just for that one thing. So, okay, if, if I check the boxes for everything, um, if we add community approval, neighborhood wants it, I need everything, background, all of that. But I'm at four ninety-eight from public. Licensing authorities can say you can't have it. But if the board of adjustments said, hey, you're at four ninety-eight, we approve this setback.
Is variance.
Is variance, sorry. Then the licensing authority cannot say you check all of the other boxes.
But you can't.
But you don't check the five hundred, you can't have, they have to give it to you if you check all the other. Now, you could get the approval for four ninety-eight, but let's say that you failed two or three of the other ones. You, you may not get your license.
So go back to the original.
Yeah, back to the original.
It's not a good idea in my, my very professional opinion on board of adjustments and having been through a lot of adjustment cases. Putting all of the emphasis for one application type on a non-elected group. It doesn't create consistency or clarity for, over legislative standpoint for the applicants, for the residents. Because your board members change over time based on appointments. They are looking at site-specific criteria, which in that instance is not going to be looked at consistently on a case-by-case basis. Which is what your setback distances provides is that clarity. I don't recommend the board of adjustments as an option moving forward. Another issue is essentially every applicant for everybody who wants to open a marijuana establishment in the town of Wellington starts with the board of adjustment.
Yeah.
So it really changes the focus of that entity to, it will be hearing variance requests for marijuana and a lot of.
Okay, so mayor, uh, I'll just sum mine up for the points that trustee Daly provided early on. And for that right there, my preference would be option B or C.
Thank you. We're going to know option A. I prefer option A.
I am with option A.
With five, A was right.
And I will like to add five to that as well.
Okay.
Because that guarantees that they do have the same application process as every other business in town for various, correct?
Makes a mess of things, but.
Ever, uh, concerned if our, if our, you know, staff is really discouraged and there's an option, just because everyone's. Um, I'm a big fan of option C and the reason why is this. Uh, we receive a lot of public comment from residential folks, uh, concerns of setbacks. And it sounds like an increase in that slightly, um, would kind of offset some of the other changes that are, are proposed in option C. And I think they make sense from the use case. Again, they're not opening up a million locations. I think what it's doing is causing, it's, it's making it more fair. Um, and it's increasing setbacks on a couple items, which makes sense. We don't want the marijuana district, right? Um, we want, uh, more room from residential potentially. So I think although it is changing setbacks, I think it is doing it in a fair way, but has the intention of protecting. Our residents from, you know, those concerns they have. And then I'm also, I'm like part of that too, the in-home daycares. It's kind of like one of those things where we create a rule, but can't really enforce it because we don't have control over it. I mean, we talked about that quite a bit, you know, um. I mean, what's the point if it's not consistent? If you look at a website one day with filters that should include it, you look at it another day with filters that should include it. And they, they've missed six daycares. Um, that's not reliable and we can't hold people to standards that aren't reliable. So, um, I think it's one of those things we can enforce and if we can't enforce it, I don't know how we're, when people are reliable to us.
Is our liquor licensing authority, when they go through all these applications, verify daycares? Is that one of the requirements? Not liquor, marijuana licensing authority. Does she, is that not one of the requirements? Is the verification of?
She, it's, it's a requirement to get a license as they have a certain setback from, from daycares.
Do they look into it?
The, the only, the only source that she has is the same source that we have.
But she's highly experienced in accessing the data.
Not, I mean.
She doesn't look, I mean, she's the licensing authority in Commerce City, which also doesn't use, doesn't use. Daycares as a setback. Um, uh, she has the same source of information that we have.
Is the state setback for schools, is that like five hundred feet or something?
Across the state, five hundred, a thousand feet is much more common for setbacks from schools.
Okay.
But like I said, license, uh, in-home daycares is not something that would seem pretty much anywhere else.
So like theoretically, if we change from one. The person that we're using now to somebody else that is used to using those state's standards, that they could. Potentially miss some of those like.
Sure. I mean. Yeah, I mean, that's one of the concerns I've had with, I mean, after using. So I like to think of myself as technologically savvy, but the fact that I was, I missed daycares, I couldn't find daycares that I knew existed kind of concerned me that. You know, if, if Cody's not in the office and somebody else is filling out the form, I, I'm concerned about that form being filled out wrong. And, and while that's a burden on us, it's, it's a real burden that has real impacts on the town and on applicants. Because we have a hard time verifying this data. It's, it, it, it sounds. Like to say that websites are hard to use, it's very, very poor. And if we're relying on that as our sole tool to verify something that impacts somebody's ability to open a license, open a shop. It opens us to a lot of potential liability if we do it wrong. And I think there's a lot of ways we could do it wrong. And that's why I'm saying I highly recommend removing that from the equation because that is our sole source of that information. And I, and I think it's very problematic.
And then the double edged sword is, is that if we try and implement a special tracking system for our own, it's going to be just the same. It's going to be tough to track.
I mean, if, if the idea of, you know, if we had to register with the town of Wellington, if an in-home daycare had to register, well. Our code says that, uh, the ordinance says it has to be a licensed daycare. So actually then they would register with the town and get a business license. They might actually have an active business license, but they might let their state daycare license lapse. Those two things are not tied together. I mean, really they are, but just because they surrender their state daycare license doesn't mean that they would automatically come into the town. So we actually couldn't rely on either source of information, I don't think accurately to verify that information. And that's, I think is a real problem.
But we can accurately verify schools and commercial daycares.
Schools and commercial daycares, there's a lot more process involved. In-home daycares come and go much quicker. And because of the state permission of in-home daycare licensing and zoning and everything else, the town kind of has to take a hands-off approach to in-home daycare. But when it comes to a, a commercial childcare center, yeah, we're involved. We're involved in the site plan, we're involved in the business app. I mean, there, there's a lot more there. As schools certainly, we know where that is. The other thing about schools and, and commercial daycare centers is they don't come and go like at in-home childcare centers.
A question, what is the government entity, the state that manages the in-home daycares?
Uh, it's from the childhood council.
Okay, are they the ones that upload the information to the website?
Yes.
I'm assuming that information is public information, it's on a website, is that correct?
That's absolutely right.
And so can you send an email to early childhood council and say, can you please provide me a list of any daycares within eight zero five four nine?
My experience working with them and trying to find that exact information is it takes a long time to get the information back and the responses. You can find that information on call that research. It's been my experience as well. So, that is, this is their source of that information. This is how that information is, is the only.
I'm like noted, sad to think about how much sales tax revenue we're losing from not identifying these daycares.
You know. Unless you're selling children.
No, but so they don't have to pay anything as far as being a daycare facility. There's nothing that goes back to the town whatsoever.
Yeah, no.
No. The benefit of having in, in community childcare in our community, there's, there's certainly a service need that's needed in the community. But there's no sales tax collected on a, on a daycare.
Enables a lot of other people that receive sales tax right here for the children. Um, the footprint of a school or commercial daycare is big. And it kind of makes sense for the larger setback. When we talk about in-home daycares, we're looking at some in-home daycares on one side of the interstate that exclude properties on the other side of the interstate. Because that setback is so big. Um, so. Well, I mean, I don't think that's fair. That doesn't make sense because those aren't kids who are going to happen upon the store. Um, they're on the other side of the interstate, but that setback distance is still excluding some properties.
Yeah, I mean, these kids are in a home, in a residential area.
Where they would.
Why, why are we zoning a home? The exact same as we're zoning a school where there's hundreds, if not thousands of children. Especially when they're already protected by the residential. I don't, to me, that's, that's my, my hangup. Why are we, why are we doing this for something that could pop up or close? You know, within the sixty-day period of an application. It increases liability for us. When in all reality, some at-home daycares are like five kids. That's no different than a group of five kids leaving the junior high and going to their buddy's house while their parents are gone. I mean, what, what's the, what's the difference? Can anybody answer me that? Those kids are there every day, all day, five days a week or more.
They probably get out a lot more to them than the product school.
I mean, when I was in daycare, we stayed.
We didn't, we went everywhere, walks, nature walks, stuff like that.
Well, there's a big difference for the adult supervision. Ratio to children with a commercial daycare and a school like. Like I'm more concerned about the one to thirty adult to child ratio more, far less I am with an in-home daycare where it's one person where they can. Most of the time unless they're like a licensed preschool have, can only have like up to five. So like there's like eyes on those kids with those in-home daycares and they should be a little bit more supervised. And generally those kids are under school age.
Right.
So they shouldn't be like out wandering around without some supervision. If they're not wandering around, that would not be a great new daycare. And so like, I completely understand that setback requirement for the commercial daycares and schools. Like that makes sense because those kids are walking up and down the streets and in transit. So it makes sense to keep that restricted. But I completely understand the liability that the staff is. Trying to set us up for success on and keep them out of trouble. Where there is this huge like in-between period where somebody could be applying for a license, have invested millions of dollars. Set up their businesses, ready to. And then at day fifty-three, a licensed daycare sets up.
And that is outside the scenario that you guys are doing, like whether or not you can find existing ones. That's one thing, but whether or not one opens in the middle of your process where you've already received your land use approval to move on. So that's completely something that we can't control or manage or have a head set for that at all. But if there's a license in progress, the state is going to provide, but hasn't. After we've already provided our approval, they bought a proxy for two million dollars.
But is there, do we, is there any way that we can put in this? You know, if they've applied for the marijuana license.
You got the state if, if we're.
No, but I mean, still, I mean, if they've applied like on January first, a daycare opens up, uh.
Within sixty days.
Twenty, yeah, whatever, you know, whoever opens for, I mean, whoever applies first, I mean. I would think that would make sense.
And then, but in that case, then we have that establishment near our daycare. So if we're.
But it, it wasn't there, it's just kind of like, uh, you know, if the marijuana place established and then a daycare opens afterwards.
Right.
That's okay with that.
But they would know about it and it's the same. But they would know about it and it's the same thing, but they might not want to open somewhere where a marijuana.
But, but I think, I, I, I think, is that possible?
I like the wording on that one.
They have to meet the setback. They have to meet the setbacks as of their application.
Right.
Verification.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so basically.
We could, we could write that in and that's just.
Verification on an unreliable source. But why?
No, they upload it within hours. Okay, so when we say unreliable source, if, if the point is the government entity that tracks this says this is the source you have to use, I'm sorry, there's.
That's what we gotta use.
That's what we gotta use. I mean, that, that is what, if the state government's going to say there's no other way to get this information, that's it. And if we put it as of your confirmation and maybe internally staff just says, hey, we're gonna, you know, hold it a day or two till Cody's back in the office to double confirm. Okay, a day or two to make sure it's correct. I don't have a comment. As of the day that you submit your completed application to staff, they confirm your setbacks. Those are what carry forward. If something changes after you've set your application, that's not on you.
Yep.
You have done to the best of your ability. Now, there may be a need to. Make sure, you know, your application can't drag on for a year and a half, right? If you just keep delaying it or something, but you know, as long as there's no undue delays on your part. It's, it's, it's off you.
On the town's part, you mean?
Yeah, on the applicant's part. So if the applicant delays their application for two years for stuff on their own end.
Oh, I see.
And like I put my application today and two years from now I'll get around and finishing it, not, that's not gonna fly. But as long as. You know, you're applying everything, there's no, and I, I believe there's already processes in place in land use code about timelines and things like that. I don't remember. But, okay. Yeah, because then at that point, you need to meet them as of the time that you are submitting your final application, right? Your, your finished application, you need to meet those requirements.
Uh, there will be somewhat problematic in implementation because if the date that they submitted, if the staff review unit isn't there and they review it two days later, something comes in during that. Gap between application and review, there could still be discrepancies.
What if we did it?
At the moment of review.
Is it?
Yeah, this sounds like.
That's the direction. I mean, it's, it's, we can draft it. It's, it's totally, it's not something we consider. And so it's, um.
We need to air it all out tonight. How do I find out for, for my marijuana shop? I submit my application to you. What is my point that I find out that you've checked all the boxes that everything's appropriate? Is that an email from you? Is that a phone call? What is that?
The setback in, is only a setback verification application states that the application will, will be reviewed within four days.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so at the end of those four days, I hear from you, yes, you need everything, you're verified. What do I get at the end of four days?
Yeah, the application form has two pages. The second page has the, the standards. On the current regulations with a box for each one. Is it satisfied or yes? Those are pulled out with a yes, satisfied or no, not satisfied. And that application form is returned to the applicant.
Okay, and then if I check all the boxes, satisfied, that's considered.
Signed as approved.
Signed as approved.
Or verified, I guess.
My point is at that point, that Cody or whoever in his office signs that form, that they meet those checkboxes. Right? If there's a difference of within those three days, something. But at that point, I would understand that is the first step of a much longer process of things that they have to go through, correct? Okay, so that helps us to address the issue of they've invested all this time and hours and life into this. And then all of a sudden it changed. I'm sorry, there might be a four-day period. It's very unlikely, but it could happen that something changes within a four-day period. But I think that as long as we do within that, it provides a much better solution. That allows us that you are being a good partner and doing your part to say, hey, I have met your requirement here. If somebody else comes in and changes that after the fact, that's not on me, right? I didn't go tell them, open this daycare across the street from my. Center and we can't control that. And I agree at that point, it is outside of our control, but what is in our controls at the time of submitting the application. Checking the official state provided system. It meets the requirements and checking the state required, the state provided solution. The state's not giving us an option of email me a list. I would love that option, but if the state's not going to do it, we have to use what the state's gonna give us. So.
I heard concerns of, and I don't know validity of this, but it has been brought up by public comment and also by trustee. That daycares potentially be bought out or encouraged to not function anymore in order to reduce that requirement. Um, that's. Um, but who am I to say what you do with your business? If you want to sell it, you sell it.
The one thing with that is I would think whether it's a two thousand foot setback, fifteen hundred foot setback or a thousand foot setback. You're gonna run into the same thing. If somebody, if that's all that's hindering him, if somebody wants to open up, they're gonna try to buy him out.
Could we discuss the, the distance of the setback though? One side of the interstate, when we say we want this all potentially on I twenty-five corridor. And, and daycares on the east side are prohibiting that from happening when they're separated by an interstate.
Yeah.
So I don't think that makes sense. Cause those kids surely better not wander across the interstate.
And again, this is going to be a living, breathing document. I mean, we're going to be reviewing this probably yearly.
Yeah.
And hopefully not yearly, hopefully it's gonna run great. But we can always change it down the road.
I mean, this, this isn't existing.
That's what, that's what we were, we're trying to do right now.
Right, trying to get her done.
Yeah, but it doesn't make sense to you guys that there's a daycare on the east side?
Daycares don't, I mean, it doesn't make sense for home daycare to have the same limitations on marijuana establishment.
Do we have anything over on the east side of the road? That's a zone for marijuana, right?
Oh, yeah. Oh, for marijuana.
Bombers is on C three, so is the property across the street. There are, there are C three zones on the east side of the highway.
But the one across the street is owned by, owned by the largest church.
There's a private property there as well. That's, that's two parcels where the largest church owns, one on the east end and the west side next to the highways owned by private.
That makes sense that an east side daycare would prohibit something on the I twenty-five corridor we're talking about. We would encourage that traffic to be from opening. That doesn't make sense.
What's the average age of a kid in a daycare?
Up to twelve, under six. Cause otherwise they're at school.
But they go out of their school and they walk to those places after school.
Probably running more marijuana walking to daycare than they would having more than a thousand feet.
I like your suggestion because it does not change the ordinance. It just covers. Um, the people that do submit their application. I, like I said, I don't know what properties are possibly affected. Because it's not identified in these maps, so, but as it sits now, I don't mind. The idea as of the date submitted, um.
You were. Draft, I mean, i- it's absolutely true. I mean, uh, just, but when you say it doesn't change the ordinance, it, it, it will change the ordinance. I mean, the, the, you've referred ordinance is not clear about.
Yes.
A lot. And so in order to make that clear and right, it is going to be more than just a couple lines.
Right.
It will be a whole process that's created. So be aware. It is doing, it is going to be a rather substantial section addition.
And my understanding is there is zero properties that fall within. Other than the one that's, that was already annexed and zoned. Yeah, so, so before that, then there was zero property for entire town. Without a requirement of something, so. This. If, if somebody were to play devil's advocate, they might say that even though the voters approved it, we prohibited it through. Or actually having anything open. That sounds like lawsuits to me. So, um, I, I just, I, our liability is huge, I think, so.
Guys, here's a question. Can we get sued by the residents for changing their vote?
Are you proposing a different option? We've had people share their options, mayor. Are you proposing a different combination of things? Cause you, I know you're kind of highlighting different things.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not a big fan of throwing five in with a, all say that right away. I don't think court of judgment should have anything to do with it. At this point, um. I'd be with C out of any of them, um. I think that has the broadest. Zoning that is super clear, that won't change or can't change by an in-home daycare popping up or closing. Cause it, it just. Um, I, I can't wrap my head around why we would zone in-home daycare any differently than residential. And there are kids hanging out at homes in a residential areas. Unsupervised, most of the time there are multiples at just a house. Compared to ones that are under the age of six, somebody who's supervising them. I don't, I mean, that doesn't make sense to me.
Well, and then I mean, are we really comparing apples to apples here? And because how many liquor stores and, and bars are these kids gonna? You know, do they walk by at the same time? I mean, are they any safer than walking by a marijuana facility that has twice the security than?
Right, I mean, you're not getting in the marijuana facility. By any means. If you're looking one for six, I don't think you're getting into liquor store at the same time, though, unless you're an adult. I don't know.
Marijuana facilities are incredibly controlled. They're not, no, they're.
And then if the old municipality is using in-home daycare.
That we could find. I mean, we did. Those that I call.
And maybe, maybe there's a reason for that because of what a mess it turns it into. Do we want to be setting, do we want to be addressing this ordinance as the voters intended for us to do within a year? And doing nothing with it and leaving it a mess? Is that what we want?
I think we're getting a little bit of clarity right now from what we're discussing and. Maybe down the road, we can. Do a little more broader maybe at that point, but I still think right now, A. Option A is the best one, especially with the clarification of. Making sure that the date of application is, you know, you can't have some zealot out there that is anti-marijuana. Go in and open up daycare centers just because you got marijuana places coming in. I mean, once it's locked in, it's locked in. And I think that takes the problem off the city. It takes, uh, gives clarity to both the marijuana people and I think the city at that point, at that.
Are we ourselves beings that was not changing?
Well, maybe we should be. I don't know. I myself, I think we should.
Across the freeway, does that make sense?
And I live on that side.
Side of the freeway prohibits a property on the west side. Tell me this, does that make any sense? For, for the core reason of why you think that setback should exist with in-home daycare.
It, it, it doesn't matter, right? Unless, unless we draw a line down I twenty-five and say, these things are not going to cross one way or the other, right? The fact is all the public or all the school setbacks already go across. The interstate anyway, right? So unless we're gonna draw a line and say these things do not interact with each other, which.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that's the route we want to go down. I, I'm not necessarily opposed to option C. But I would still want to see the school and the commercial preschools numbered at two thousand in the possible changes. If, if we think that this is going to be a serious liability and the fact that we don't think the data is accurate, which I, I don't. From what I've heard tonight, I'm not, I'm not sure that I. Fully believe that. I think the data is there and I think it is accurate. It's just a matter of getting it looked up in the right way. But even still, I would not be opposed to option C, but again, I would want to see two thousand schools and commercial preschools yet.
And excluding in-home daycares from schools.
If we truly think that that is a liability. I think that paves the way for option C.
So are we absolutely positive that it creates liability?
Uncertainty is always a risk.
But there is a risk that it couldn't, could or couldn't. I never.
Already at this point, we have applicants that are, um. I mean, there, there's question about whether it currently applies to in-home daycares with applicants who are saying that they don't believe it is and, and they're kind of waiting to see what the board does. Uh, there's, there's chance that we do nothing. Um, yeah, we can guess it. Um, it's possible. That's absolutely right. Um, if we. Do nothing and we, if there's some follow-up in the verification form, um, which I think is. Yeah, the website's in theory works and it provides good information. I'll just. But applicants who use it and provide, find wrong information. So see, I think there's uncertainty there. So I think, I think the risk of verification form being signed, not signed, um, based on that information is a problem.
I don't know. I would almost propose an increase to the residential zone over an increase to the, to schools. Yeah, and option C does include increase setback for public and for shop to shop. Yeah, so that's additional above and beyond the existing ordinance protections for those two setbacks.
That's the only reason I'm considering that one.
And that's what offsets you down some of the other changes, consider. So, I mean, I would like to see, you know, how that two thousand. For the schools and commercial preschools would impact, you know, the map piece. But, you know, I would be more.
That's the first map. No, with a, no, with a two thousand. Oh, oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, I get you. Yeah.
Well, okay. Right, with the other ones because. I mean, pussy really brought up a really great point. You know, if we're trying to create that buffer between. In-home, you know, the potential for in-home daycares, you know, that is satisfied to that residential zone piece. So instead of, you know, increasing the schools and commercial preschools, we can. Increase that residential zone one, you know, another two hundred and fifty feet and that would help create that additional space. Without, does it not really? Significantly impacting a lot of the C three.
With all of this residential, does it really increase it?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, when we look at liquor licensing, a lot of those setbacks are around five hundred feet. I mean, so everything that we're proposing is more restrictive than liquor licensing or the state marijuana licensing. Where kids unsupervised at the park and in the neighborhood. So like if we were going to increase somewhere, that really I, I think.
Right, I'm more, I'd be more concerned about kids that are unsupervised.
Right.
So, so numbers you guys want to see on C? What numbers do you want to see for, for people?
I'm liking it because this is doubled already.
Yeah, I, I, we keep, we keep, let's think about it this way. So a thousand foot from an existing establishment, a thousand feet from public. Schools, you're saying two thousand. And then residential, what are you thinking? Right here, it's two fifty. You're thinking three hundred, four hundred.
Five hundred eliminates primarily all the C three.
That's what I was thinking. So that's what I was looking at, because all of this residential wipes that out to the street side.
Yeah.
But that's already wiped out here.
But that's, this one's only two fifty. If we go up to five, if you look on this one right here.
It has no effect on this because it's already closed.
Yeah, but everything, everything that has residential that backs up to C three would be eliminated. And that's, that's I twenty-five corridor. Uh, that's, that's the front of the road, so. I don't think that meets a lot of our other goals here. So, but two fifty, that's an increase. I mean, my whole lot's fifty feet, so it's a whole other house or potentially lack of house. Well, I mean, you look at the possible changes in that other marijuana thousand foot setback, if like. After that one goes off, that's right in the middle of town. I mean, that leaves maybe an option on the north side and maybe an option on the south side. So, I mean, I'm not really seeing how. We're worried about a gazillion of these things opening up. Yeah, there's really no space to do anything. So if we make any adjustments, the, to the possible changes in option C. We're going to be right back to where we started talking ourselves in circles because we're adding more restrictions. They, they have beaten these numbers to a pulp. Yeah. I think the fifteen hundred is, uh, it makes them, if you really compare the fifteen hundred to the two thousand. When you're looking at the large schools and that separation, I mean, it's pushing it out to major street ways. When you're looking at the large schools and that separation, I mean, it's pushing it out to major street ways well beyond anything that's local to the actual.
I mean, see, so is your, you save everyone a lot of time if your goal is just to open more shops in town. Choose how many you want, set a number and stop with the setbacks, because. You keep saying, don't change this, don't change that, because it will close off more areas for more shops. If you just want more shops in town, just pick a number. I want this many more marijuana shops in town. I don't like caps, I don't think we should have caps. Right, I don't think we should change our setbacks, you guys keep saying change the setbacks, oh, but don't change it, because this will knock out more properties. So, if your goal is to not knock out C3 properties, why are you even talking about setbacks? The goal here is to allow more than you want to business in town, so pick a number, is that correct? Sounds like that's your goal, is what it sounds like. Well, as, as a town, shouldn't we be avoiding litigation? I think we should be upholding what was put in place in terms of setbacks. There were very specific setbacks that were put in place. And I think we should stand on those, those were approved by the voters. Even though voters also, they hated, maybe we can change it. I know they did, that doesn't mean that we have to change them. Right, so it means we can and they voted that we could. And I'm, I'm fine, I'm just saying, you keep talking about changing setbacks. See, trying to make it so there could be more, if that's your goal, that's fine, just pick a number. And, and it makes it super simple, because you don't have to jury-mandor around this, that, and the other thing, just pick your number. I want, I'm not a fan. I'm not a fan.
I don't think that that's, that's the intent here, I think the intent is to provide.
Clarity.
Situation so that as the market changes and the town evolves and we're annexing future properties into town. We're creating reasonable distances for businesses to come and develop in the community. So, like naturally, with the setbacks that have been provided, the market will be limited unless the town grows. And then when the town does grow by the limitations that we've set. It's be a little great, reasonable distances that make sense. If I were to go outside right now and say, where's 2,000 feet from where I'm standing? No idea, but what the 2,000 feet represents is a significant distance, like, right? That's what 2,000 means. I could do, I could do like 300 yards, go, I got it. But I cannot tell you 2,000 feet from where I'm standing, where that perimeter would be, right? The, the purpose of 2,000 is to make sure it's a big distance, right? 1,500, I mean, if you're taking some and giving some somewhere else, that makes sense to me, especially if we're using the feedback we've received. To make these adjustments, so 1,500 feet is significant, that's a lot. I mean, look at the blues, right? This is the, this is the 1,500 feet, right? That's like, that's a significant part of our town, right, surrounding any schools, that's big, so.
And then you plot a marijuana one somewhere in where there's not one of those or holes. And then all of a sudden, there's this great big 1,000 foot radius and then it's gone again until there's growth and development, right? So.
But if they have to do this, it's just to increase all setbacks, I don't think that's maybe our goal either, so. I mean, I appreciate the ones that are increased, because I think that makes sense for what the people want, but um. I don't think that that goes without any compromise anywhere, otherwise we're just increasing limitations.
Why, why don't I appreciate that, we're trying to come to a decision, and I think trustee, you had mentioned earlier that you were good with option C.
I am, but not with the maintaining at 2,000, that's where I'm, that's where the thing is. I mean, we're talking about 500 feet at this point, right? So, I mean, you can't take 500, or add 500 here, add 50 here. And then that's it, right? I feel like that has to be a give and take, and I think the give and take happens with the school. Setback, because 1,500 is still a lot, it's, it's the biggest, it would be the largest and the biggest priority of course for us.
So respectfully, we are removing 17 times 2,000 feet in setbacks in option C. So when you talk about give and take, you talk about 500 feet on actual schools. You're neglecting that we're taking out 17 locations currently that have a 2,000 foot setback that will be removed with option C. That's a lot of gift.
That 17 includes all licensed daycares, not just it. So, that also includes commercial.
Just maybe 10.
Schools are commercialized, because they have the school plus the alphabet preschool.
I think that's a great point, and I think that's a good reason why we should keep those 2,000.
I'd like to see a map then, if we could, just as a follow-up then, if we are going to provide any.
Option C with 2,000.
Option C with 2,000, and then, in my mind, those are the two that I, I'd be willing to weigh against each other.
Option C, 15, option C, 2,000, and then you're still wanting option A with five. I would prefer five, I am willing to work out. If we're going to say we're not going to allow the board of adjustments, I think we need to figure out a process for marijuana to appeal. Whether that comes to the board of trustees, I don't know what that looks like. That, I am fine with that being worked out separately, so we don't have to tie all of the other stuff up with this. I'm fine with coming back to that, but yes, I, I, I'm not in support of C. I think that if you're going to let it seem, that's. So, I would be in support of that, even if we don't add number five, if we come back to this amount of room.
So I'd like to see a map with the 2,000s that was suggested on option C. The. And can we please just get one, I mean, I'll Google it and look it up or call early childhood center if I have to. But, like, one that actually shows where the 17 facilities actually are located.
There's a previous map that you provided, but it wasn't in a packet.
Yeah, Colorado shines. Five mile radius.
That is the, the tool available to us to find the locations of the facilities. To trustee Gator's point, there, there has been a map that was created by staff that showed the, at least approximate of that. Right, because we did it with a map and compass before we had the GIS capability to do it. But it was created as a means to illustrate where some of the in-home facilities are located. That has changed a number of times as, as daycares have come and gone, so we'd have to continue to recreate that to illustrate it.
I would do the filter in the way for one mile, take a screenshot of the date and time. And say, according to your source, your website, that you said is the only way to do this. I pulled it at this time of the day, I'm providing my review, and this is what your source says. And it's missing things. We've already confirmed that that's an issue with the poll. Okay, I just want to go with that.
Yeah, with the, the trends that I'm seeing with childcare licensing requirements and the retraction of, you know, a lot of what they're doing relative to that. I don't think that having this reasonable expectation of trying to rely on this information to be accurate is going to be. Sustainable long-term, I am favorable to option C, and I, you know, I'd like to see the. Two considerations by trustee Mason and trustee Bailey. You know, how that, those are impacted.
And you're A without five.
Without five.
You guys got your direction? You got C.
Heavy sigh, I'm looking at future meetings agenda, so.
C is a citizen with 2,000 foot setback on school. A map including the daycare. And then option A, just option A. May I make a suggestion that you who are in favor of C, pick a number now and then it can be amended. So either pick 1,500 or 2,000 and then add, because we don't want to have like three different ordinances.
I'm at 2,000.
Have one or the other, because see, you guys who are in favor of C, pick one, 15 or 2,000. Have them bring that, and then at the meeting, when we see the map, then if you feel otherwise, you can amend it to change the distance from either 1,500 to 2,000 or 1,500. Versus having three different ordinances being proposed, have two ordinances, one for A.
Asking that we bring in ordinance on this, I was getting that we were requesting that we have another work session with more maps.
No, no, no.
We, you want us to draft ordinance?
Yes, so I would say bring one for A, one for C, and you guys would see, pick a number, 2,000 or 1,500, and then at the meeting. If, looking at the map, you feel whatever number's in there is not appropriate, then you can do an amendment to the ordinance for just the number.
I don't want to do that, that doesn't feel, I would be way more comfortable having.
I want to have both options in front of me before I say.
So, yeah.
Yes.
And then in the packet, and we can never A, B, and C or whatever, so. That way you just choose, and then that would, whichever way it is adopted, would be the one. Thank you, that will help keep the motion much cleaner, I think.
When do you bring this up to the board for?
Next week, next week.
We got it on the 25th, can you pull that?
Are we, are you also wanting to add in the piece about the?
I don't.
Will they have enough time to do it correctly?
We're not adding that other piece about the, the. Title of the application form.
Because the, the time of their vacation only matters if A is approved, if C is approved, the daycare don't matter.
But if you want us to bring, if you want us to bring A.
That needs to be in the.
That needs to be in, yeah.
Just want that included in A, if you want A with that addition.
If you can hold it together, that's fine, or if you want to put another week out, that's fine. I, I think it needs to be added, but I don't care.
I mean, basically, in, in order to get it in the pack, it has to be done by Thursday, I mean, so.
I'm saying, if A passes and you need to bring that one piece back.
So you're willing to consider A without that piece in?
No.
I want all of it, but if you cannot get it together in time, I don't want to delay everything else on that one thing.
I think he just wants direction.
Yes, if you can get it together to us, yes, bring that with A.
If I cannot get it, you want A without that, is that the direction? We want to consider A without that piece in it. I mean, that's, that's really what you're asking, is me to bring A with whatever I can get done, if you will consider that without the piece, I'm happy to.
I will.
I would almost think we need to have that in there when we vote on it. Just for the both sides, you know, the clarity, yeah, we're talking about clarity at this point.
Yeah, so I would say it needs to come with it then, if that's one of the things where we're looking at protecting both sides, then that protects both sides.
Okay, so if you can get it done, we'll have it on the May 23rd meeting, if not, it'll be June 13th.
Perfect.
Okey-dokey, sounds good. Because we've got a placeholder for it and bump meetings, just in case. I won't be, you won't be on the 23rd. That's going to be, we'll actually do it on June 13th. We'll see what we can.
All right.
We believe in Dan and appreciate you so much.
This is a big deal.
Need to get it right, not fast.
Yep, yep, this is a big deal, thank you guys, good discussion.
On to the library board.
He's like, I changed my mind, I'm sick now.
So, Dan will be doing the majority of this presentation, he's looking through his notes, so. So, this is a topic that has been on my whiteboard for a long time, along with several other items. So, so thankful to finally get this in front of you so that we all can talk about it. And Dan was able to get some really great, yes?
We need to get these back to code.
We need to get those back to code, if you care.
I'm fine with that, I don't care, but I'm fine to take them back if you don't want them. I, I, maybe Dan for clarity's sake. I heard the direction.
These have a date on them.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, Dan has given a lot of great information from Brad March as far as historical information about the library board, how we got here, why we're here. Up until a little over a year ago. We were having. The, the Parks and Rec manager and Ross coming in to quarterly updates, and somehow that brought, I don't know how it got brought off of agendas. And it just never came back, and that, in my, in looking back at old meeting minutes of the, of the Board of Trustees. That was how the library board seemed to function, it wasn't even a, it wasn't a separate call-out of the library board, it was more of just a. Agenda item of an update from the library director. So, you know, we're looking, I'm, we are all, the three of us are looking for some direction about, you know, how you want to proceed as a library board. You want it to be the Board of Trustees, you're looking for something different. How often do, are you looking at reports, how would you like that set up? So, I'll turn it over to Dan to just start giving out all that information.
Agreed. Libraries in Colorado are governed by the Colorado Library Law, Wellington's library is established a long time ago as the Wellington Municipal Library. All libraries in Colorado are governed by a Board of Trustees, you know, this is in the packet. But a Board of Trustees of a library. Has specific authority as provided in the Colorado Library Law. It can, it oversees the library, it manages a budget of a library, it hires and fires, it's, it's a, it's a governing body of a library. And in the town of Wellington, that has traditionally been the Board of Trustees. It, there have been times over the last 25 years, maybe a little more, that it has been. The Board of Trustees has appointed members of the public to sit on that library board, but there's. There's a practical issue of the Board of Trustees doesn't especially like to give authority to a body that appoints to buy property, to enter into loan, or to. To take out loans, to decide its own budget, to buy and sell, to hire and fire. And by definition, the library board has that authority. So, the Board of Trustees of the town of Wellington historically has kept that authority and has sat as the, the, the library board itself. And. Should clarify, one, one item that I get questioned, I often question. Certain people in the town of Wellington, certain residences do pay taxes to the library district, that's something you probably know or you might know. The town municipal, municipal library doesn't receive any of that funding, that's something entirely different for the. Certain parts of town don't pay those taxes, it's kind of dependent on if those areas were annexed into town before or after the Pooter Library District was formed. So, if you're, if you have residents who ask, why am I paying this tax to the library? So, that's, that's not a tax, and it's nothing to do with town law.
No control.
No control whatsoever. And we've, the town has tried to get the Pooter Library District to stop taxing town residents, because.
Yeah, for sure.
Financiers give up taxes.
How wrong is that? The tenant, the property, it was part of a library district, the one that's over by the hotel, the one that we just brought into town.
Well, you, if, that one, it was outside the, the town, it was not annexed until this year, and so it was, it's taxed as part of that library district, and it continues to be.
It'll stay that way, that's what.
The town asked, that town asked very nicely if the library district would stop taxing its residents, and they said no, and the town filed a lawsuit and said. You've got to stop taxing our residents, and the court said no, and so the town did appeal to the court of, Colorado Court of Appeals and said. Really, we don't want to keep our residents keeping taxes, and court of appeals said, no. So, residents don't do pay that, but that has nothing to do with that law, and so that money doesn't. But the library board itself, so because it has the ability to. Well, it has complete authority over its own budget and operation of the library, that's, that, that authority's been kept with the Board of Trustees. And it's been somewhat informal over the years. As Patty said, the library director has historically given updates to the Board of Trustees every so often. The Board of Trustees certainly approves the budgets. And in the library act, it says that the library board needs to recommend a budget or needs to adopt a budget, well, the Board of Trustees adopts the budget for the library. So kind of, the Board of Trustees operating in its own standard capacity has performed the functions really of that board, the library board. There have been other times where there have been more formal meetings of the Board of Trustees as library board. But that hasn't happened in quite a long time, in my understanding. There are bylaws in the packet that were adopted by the library board when it was not the Board of Trustees. And then the Board of Trustees approved those bylaws. I think there's a lot of things that. The library board is to be reconstituted as a separate entity, there's a lot of things in those bylaws that I highly recommend you change. But kind of, really the direction here we're looking for is, what does the board want to do? As the library board, with the library board. Looking for, for guidance, but that's a little bit of the history, I mean, it's. Thing is, as a statutory town, operating municipal library. The Colorado Library Law governs, so. Either board can do what that document says.
And Ross is here to provide information regarding operations, and thanks if you're interested in hearing that. Be ready to just go on ahead and go into the discussion, that's your call.
Our goal is just to find him some information, and hear what.
No, I'm sorry, I just, I didn't realize your name.
I did, that was. Before we get started, can we just hear about some of the.
Before we get started, can we just hear about some of the, the, the library?
From Ross.
What's going on, yeah, let's go.
Um, so just very shortly, I am actually going to be short this time. So that people are, I had surgery today, so I am very sore and I'm not supposed to talk, so I'm going to keep it short. Though, even though we don't collect taxes for half the town, we manage our budget very well. We have improved and increased our numbers again this year, you can see on the report, the few things. A few things I do want to point out this year, last year I decided I need, I'm a raw data person. I needed actual counts, so I took down the door counter. DPL, larger libraries use a door counter, I'm in and out of this library forty-five times a day, that counts me. So the numbers that we have this year in this report are actual patrons who actually utilized our resources. Not friends of the library, not courier, not Amazon, these are actual, we do tick marks. So our numbers dropped a bit, but these are raw data numbers. Because I needed account for accountability, I want to know exactly who's there. Making sense, I'm, I'm a little blurry, sorry. This year, we're very proud, we all work very hard, we had, I provide TA reports every week. Four hundred and sixty-one new patrons, I compared it to other municipalities with similar populations. I'm not going to use names because we don't compete, we're all a team. We beat them all. So. I was tasked with making sure that the library was successful and we are, all of our events have increased. So we're very proud and we've done it under budget. We developed the youth council this year that has been great, eight thousand dollars donated by residents. For youth, they get to control it, they get to manage it, we're launching programs, they have ownership. People often forget that the youth are also taxpayers, so I owe them. They spend money, they spend their allowance, I see them at least, I see them at Dollar General, we work for them as well, and people often forget that, it's not just adults, so. We're very proud.
Thank you for everything you're doing.
Sorry. Questions?
So. Supposed to meet once a month, at least eight times a year, you know, in three years. And I agree that bylaws need to be adjusted, but I think they actually, if we're either, if, if we're going to serve as library board, we need to actually meet as a library board. If we're not going to serve as library board, then we need to appoint a library board that can actually function as well, we were, so I don't really care one way or the other. But when the bylaw says we're supposed to meet eight times a year and we haven't met in the three years I've been on the board, and who knows how long before that, that's kind of a problem. And I don't think.
To be the library board, I guess that's my question.
I don't mind being the library board.
We, we cannot allow a group outside. We cannot allow a group outside of this to be able to enter into contracts and loans and be in charge of the assets of the town that are not liable to electeds for one thing and are not controlled within our scope. That is like the scariest thing as I was reading that, who can hire and fire people? That's, that would cause pure chaos, fear, a horrible situation. And we cannot have that liability of another group managing our assets.
Is that not what Dan was talking about changing part of it, and that's definitely a big part of it, then it would need to be changed.
So that, no, that state statute, that's not something.
Colorado Library Law.
Yeah.
Library Board of Trustees has that authority.
Yeah.
Our by, the bylaws seem to indicate that it has less authority, but state law controls, not the bylaws of the organization. So no, if the, the, the town cannot create a library board that is outside.
Can't make kind of a different entity that's not under that particular bar.
Could make a different entity, but you couldn't call it the library board.
And deposits, if we did that, it could help out Ross big time, I would hope, I don't know, what would your input be on it? I don't want to make you talk anymore.
There is, there is a concern with having an outside group, we do have funds, we do have trusts, we do have land purchasing dollars that were set aside decades ago. So. Putting temporary, it, it would, committee or anything would be a temporary.
Right, but if they couldn't make contracts and buy land or stuff like that, if they're there for an assistant and give you a hand.
I don't think that's.
Well, I don't think that's what we're talking.
I don't think there would be a point, I, I get what you're saying, you're saying create like just a pure, but then we'd be creating a pure advisory board. That would then have to come to us as a, so we'd have essence to like. Yeah, I don't think it makes sense to, so it's either, either we delegate out, or we do it ourselves. I, I, I don't have a problem with us doing it ourselves, I agree, there's a lot of concerns that were brought up previously that made sense to keep with the board.
So I, I have a quick question, do we, are the bylaws required as part of state statute?
I think the, the, one of the requirements is you have to apply laws.
So, and the concern with the bylaws are presented that they are.
In some ways.
Than what state statute requires.
In some ways they contradict state statute, in some ways they actually say what the Board of Trustees of the town of Wellington can do, I, I think there's just not.
Yeah.
Good bylaws.
I guess my, my question then is like, would we want bylaws that are any more restrictive than what state statutes are, or are we just wanting?
One, just one.
Okay, go for it.
Within state statute, the library board has an authority of hiring and firing, and that, from the Board of Trustee perspective, is not appropriate. So if anything, if we were to, of course, rewrite the bylaws as needed to really reference the state statute and then maybe provide some like operational kind of things, meet quarterly, whatever, you know. We need to ensure, like even through ordinance that we're delegating those hiring, reviews, bonuses, all those processes to the town administrator, as we do for any other department, every other employee, because it's not appropriate for us to be doing that.
Well, is that, if state statute says that, then that.
You, you could have, you could delegate it, I mean, the board. Sure, I, I think in, in many regards the bylaws are, well, they're designed for another body, but I, I think it's, they tried to restrict the, what the library board could do if it were not the Board of Trustees, I, I think it went a bit too far. I would, if the Board of Trustees is going to be the library board, I would like to rewrite the bylaws with that in mind, and, and, and make it. And that, and that's what we're looking for is, how do, if, if that's going to be the case, that, that would be my recommendation. How does this board want to be the library board, do you want to meet quarterly, you can meet annually if you want, we can. How do you want to exist as a library board, is the question.
I would say at minimum quarterly, I think more often than, but minimum, no less than quarterly.
We were thinking we could set it up and have your liquor licensing authority, but have a separate section for the library board. So it would be incorporated into your regular meeting, so you would have to have a separate meeting night, and like I said, do it however often. You all like, it can start with quarterly, and if there's, maybe we do it monthly during the summers when there's lots of activities going on or something like that. I, I don't know.
Yeah, that almost makes me think opposite, because they're busy.
Really, really busy.
An agreement of being the acting library board, and then starting with meeting quarterly.
But yes, and delegating, hiring, hiring personal matters to the town administrator.
Town administrator.
And I mean, if that comes to executive session for any other personal matter that would come across the town, that's appropriate.
I'm, I wrap that.
I will set it up for the first meeting to be in July, so it'll be your second quarter, we'll finish out quarter, the second quarter in June, and then we'll set it up, I'll look at agendas and see where that might fall, best fall for July, and then it'll be every three months then on the same week. So whether it's the second or the fourth meeting, it'll be consistent once we.
We can have kind of bylaws be.
I, I don't want to miss the first one.
Yeah. And, and we'll talk, we have, I haven't committed to a date, it's in July.
Okay.
So we'll talk.
Okay.
Okay, absolutely.
Send my oldest to college overseas, can't miss it.
No, no, we, we will, we will work around your schedule, Ross.
It's really, acknowledge that our library is doing better than ever right now, and that's definitely due to leadership that we have, so. And no, by no means by, with the library board, do I have any intentions of inhibiting or making those processes harder or giving more workload associated with that. So I think that's really important to you, to make sure that they continue in the projection, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very excited to get this going.
Okay, next item is going to be revenues and expenditures.
Good evening, I think I'll just give you some high level points from the presentations, and you can address any questions from there. So our general fund ended our revenues at about eighty-three point three percent, so we were below what we were expecting to receive in the general fund for twenty-twenty-two. Our sales tax collection was over what we had projected by about twenty percent. And our property tax revenue is pretty much spot on. The unexpected funds for the general fund were about seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars, that would be due to some of the capital projects that we did not do throughout the year. Your street fund. We reduced the sales tax in the street fund by fifty percent for twenty-twenty-two, do allocate that to the parks fund. Your sales tax was still above what we projected it to be for the year. And your motor vehicle taxes, vehicle registration, road bridge tax, that was all coming out of healthy balance for the street fund, and our revenue over expenditures for year to date was a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Wait, I have a quick question. The, so on the street fund sales tax collection year to date is six hundred and thirty thousand, which is a hundred and nine percent of what we're. Thing, is that all of this sales tax, just to the street, just to the streets, okay.
That was happening one percent.
Yes, so overall, we received more sales tax than what we projected the year, okay.
And your water fund revenues were just over ten million, and your water sale revenue was about eighty percent for the year. On your revenue over expenditures year to date was two point one million, that had to do with some of the transfers. We didn't, only did fifty percent of the N F M transfers for the year, and we started direct billing a lot of those expenditures. Your sewer fund. Revenue was about forty-eight million, but I need to note that forty-five, forty-five million of that was the loan proceeds. Sewer user fee revenue was about sixty-three point one percent for the year. Your expenditures in the sewer fund was about a hundred and twenty-two point seven percent, not including capital. And we ended up with a year-to-date balance of about thirty-six million, but again, that's a lot of your loan money to go towards the capital projects with expansion.
So do we know, I know obviously we adjusted rates based on them being low for sewer, but is there a reason we're so far below what our expectation was on sewer?
You know, I would have to research as to why that came in that way. It could be. Partially due to non-payment of user fees.
Okay.
And. You know, I didn't set the budget for twenty-twenty-two and what that expectation was, so that would be something I need to research.
Okay, got it, and then do we know we were twenty percent over budget on expenses and operations?
I mean, we could go through the year-end financial report, line item by line item, and see where we were heavy on expenditures.
Is, are making their Bob online?
Me, excuse me, both are.
Okay, I want to promote them to the panelists, if you don't mind, maybe.
That would be awesome.
So we can figure that out, I, I have an idea, but I, I hate to speak out of turn since I'm not really deep into their budget, but. See if they can talk about that.
And I would say just a high level look at a, a lot of those line items, you know, over in was fuel, oil and grease. A lot of our utilities, which we saw spike in cost of those in twenty-twenty-two because of inflation.
Able to get them?
I got Megan.
Okay. Megan?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now, I'm not sure, did you hear the question from trustee?
I did.
Hey, would you like to field that?
Um, to be honest, I, I don't, I don't have a clear answer for you, I do know that there were some GL corrections that I think as of when this report was run hadn't been handled to date, there was a close to a forty thousand dollar correction that needed to be posted from the wastewater fund to the water fund that I believe just got, just got corrected on that ledger in the last couple of weeks, so that, that would be something. But to be honest, I, I really, I would honestly need to review those line items by line items because we didn't have any projects that went over. The one thing I think did go over is the sewer testing budget. That one I'm aware of, as we took on some additional testing related to both the selenium issues at the the nano, from the well production that impacts our, our permitted limits at the wastewater discharge for our discharge. But otherwise, I, I would need to dive into it in more detail because I was not aware of any overages on specific projects that we had, so it was a bit of a surprise to me.
So I'm just looking at the year end and like we're at three hundred and eighteen on the sewer testing percent to budget. Blood disposal was a hundred and thirty-eight percent to budget, professional services was a hundred and nineteen percent to budget. Water was really small, but it was a hundred and seventy-six percent to budget, utility bills were a hundred and forty-three percent to budget. R and M machinery and equipment parts were a hundred and thirty-five percent to budget, fuel, oil and grease was a hundred and eighty-six percent, wages and salaries was a hundred and three percent. So.
I remember them discussing the equipment part of it, didn't they have some?
And, are we talking about numbers on my items that are not in?
They're on our year-end financial statements that.
But they're on the website, not on this packet.
That is correct.
Okay, so I can, I, can we? I guess I just am wanting to stick to the information that's in the packet, because. I don't want to, like. Get too far off track here, like, because I don't have those, those numbers for quick reference, I didn't know that was something. So I would have been better prepared myself as a trustee this evening with the line-for-line budget items printed out from the website, if that was what I thought that we were discussing, but I thought we were discussing the treasury report here. I totally understand.
The treasury report.
The treasury report is what was in our email for my presentation today.
So I just wanted to clarify, I'm not allowed to ask questions about why our expenditures are over?
Saying, I was just.
That's what you just said.
I'm just.
It's not in the packet, you can't ask the questions.
Just a meter, please calm down, that's all what I said.
Okay.
I was just asking, is this information that is different than what's in our packet?
Yes, because they did not include the financial statements in our.
That's all I needed, was a yes or no question. I can tell you, trustee Gator, that we have seen some of these discrepancies, it's on our leadership team meeting agenda tomorrow to go over these because Public Works has had questions because they, it doesn't, like Megan said, she's like, none of our projects went over, we're not quite sure why it's showing over budget. So we are going to be talking about this tomorrow, so we'll have more information related to the financial statements to hopefully clarify and maybe if, I'm, I'm at a little bit of a loss myself, so we will, we will be bringing that forward.
That number I provided is for just the operation funds, not the capital projects. And so we did see an increase in expenditures. The nature of twenty-twenty-two and the increase in costs for a lot of operational items with inflation and interest rates going up, and it impacted everything else, and it trickled down.
Something that I would be really interested in seeing in future treasury reports, if it's possible, is the month-over-month and year-over-year sales tax collection numbers, so that we can see how the growth and development in the town is, is impacted, like, because there was, we have the, the COVID period, right? But we had, we were like moving and popping.
But we had, we were like moving and popping pre-COVID and we had a bunch of things happen since then, especially as we're starting to evolve with very long conversations. It would be very interesting to see those trends month over month and then how they compare year over year. And then one other recommendation I have is that I, this is really good and detailed information. But to quickly, like, not super like financial, like that's not my forte. So I appreciate like where it says a hundred and nineteen point nine percent of the budget, but it would be nice to have that comparison of the budgeted, the actual budget amount was two million dollars and then the actual, so it would be good to have the budgeted number and then the actual and, because otherwise I have to do that calculation with a percentage. But lots of good information. I'd love to look at sales tax trends after we have because it's going to really probably have impact on other businesses as well, I'm thinking. So I'm curious.
Yeah, I don't think we'll be able to determine exactly that it came from that, but we'll, I think we'll be able to see.
Especially if there's like a spike associated with that open meter or whatever. So that, that will be really interesting. I agree. Well, I also think it would be really interesting to see how things like special events impact our community because I would be willing to bet that if we overlay things like some of the festivals or other things that we've had, you will see that probably those months have significant spikes. So if we're looking at trying to evaluate from an events planning standpoint, like what are the things that we want to support for a community as a whole? That could help us be kind of strategic in that thinking. That's great.
Any further questions on this section?
Thank you very much.
Your drainage fund revenue year to date is about seven hundred and thirty thousand. Your utility fee revenue was about ninety six percent for the year. So we were close to what we budgeted. Expenditures for the drainage fund operation was about twenty five percent. This is a small budget, so we don't spend a lot of money out of there. We ended up with revenue over expenditures at about three hundred and twenty eight thousand for the year.
Could be excess in the fund balance. Are we able to apply that towards capital projects in future years?
In the drainage fund, yes.
Yeah, no, no, that's what I meant. Because I know that that's one of the big things is we don't have a lot of income into that. So we can apply that access in future years to other drainage projects. Okay, thank you.
Your park fund, your total revenue year to date was about one point five million. Your expenditures, not including capital, was about fifty seven percent. And you ended the year with revenue over expenditures at about a negative thirteen thousand dollars. So that is where your fund balances ended for each fund for twenty twenty two.
So clarification on the part. So we were budgeted to go over by even more. Is that a correct understanding? Because we were fifty seven percent of expenses, yet we still had a negative revenue. So we really were expecting a negative, close to a million dollars.
I would have to go back to the twenty twenty two budget book and use some thinking on that one. With the park funds, I would say some of that. We started direct billing administrative payroll. And so now we have accurate numbers and the overhead of what's coming out of the park fund versus what the transfers were expected to be. So that could be part of why we're seeing a discrepancy in budget. Two thousand and twenty two, when they split Public Works and Park from Operational Center.
I think that was twenty twenty.
Looks like the major thing in the budget was the debt service was budgeted for a million dollars. We only had two hundred and sixty nine. Didn't we pay off the parks loan early in twenty? So maybe that. So that was like, that is a difference of eight hundred thousand dollars in projected expenses as the debt service. Where are we currently at with the audit?
I have been speaking with them yesterday, today. I did reach out to her to ask for a formal update on when we will have an audit. She will get back to me tomorrow and ask for more documents, which is typical auditors where every time you reach out, they want something in return. So I will hopefully have an answer tomorrow, which.
Are there any, any red flags or anything like that in nature that's causing this delay or?
No. What happens is when you engage with a new auditor, they're going to go back and they're going to look at everything from every debt you have on the books to your previous audit work. They've reached out to the previous audit, auditors. So the first year you have a new auditor, it takes so much longer because they're not familiar with your finances. So because they're working on twenty one and they're really going through everything, they find it hard to make a clear recommendation to the board, then twenty twenty two's audit work will go much faster because they have that historical knowledge of where we're standing.
So on our end, there's no red flags?
The only thing that has come up is how we've labeled the library trust fund because it's a restricted revenue fund and it's actually going to impact fees. And I think the other impact fees and how they've been managed historically will come up.
And you'll hear back from them tomorrow hopefully?
Yes. And once I hear back from them, I will send an update to Ms. Garcia that she can send to the board.
Okay, thank you.
So any issues that were relative to how the, the impact fees were managed that's been resolved? That is something we're building into the twenty twenty four budget because we need to set up a separate fund for your park impact fees. Your groundwater dedications, your sewer impact fees in the water.
On to twenty twenty three general fund?
All right. So first quarter, and this is all very fluid because we haven't had our auditors' journal entries and we're still making GL corrections. And that will change what twenty twenty three looks like.
Clarification. So when we're looking at the twenty seven percent, that's of the full year, right? Not of, okay. And so that's like, that's good. We should like to see it about twenty five percent. I was like, if we're twenty five percent of a hundred for the year, we're good. If we're twenty seven percent of the twenty five percent. Okay, great, great.
No.
Okay.
I do want to say I'm encouraged by the sales tax collection year to date compared to the previous because the year to date for twenty twenty two was two point, about two point five. And we're sitting at, just in this first quarter, we're at what, one point?
Last total revenues, sales taxes, four point three.
Yeah, so we're about seven, eight percent.
Oh, below, got it, got it. Wrong number.
That's pretty common in the first quarter because we have people coming off of the holidays. There's not a lot of money being spent and there's no traveling. So I mean, that fluctuates. Well, and isn't sales tax collection like reported two months in May or later or something? Like, so you, the sales tax that was collected in January isn't reported until like February or March? Yeah. And also it depends on if they're monthly filings or quarterly. So if you have quarterly filings, that's not going to show up until April, May.
And I think to Mr. Mary Prochance's point about showing the month to month, month over month or year to year, it shows, that will show us, are we really, are we behind? Are we just at where we were last year? You know, and that, that makes, that helps clarify this information quite a bit. So that's a great idea.
Yeah, so I guess maybe to add on to that sales tax collection piece, you know, be sure in reference that it was collected in this month, but received in this month. Otherwise it'll always look like you're way behind. And what I can do for the next board packet is under staff reports, I can provide that report for you to give you clarification where we're at with the sales tax. How many years back do you think you could go on that? I was on the state website. I could probably go back several. Okay, I guess maybe like three to five years.
When did they make the change to the online ordering that we got taxed on? It was twenty nineteen. I wouldn't go past that because that was a big jump for us. If we go anything before that, so I would say maybe the twenty nineteen, I would don't want to go past that because anyways.
It's not going to make sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree. Even though it's going to look a little off, at least I think having some historical data to, to show some benchmarks or something. Help us as we start talking about economic development, things like that. So we have something to base our progress on.
I'd be curious to see twenty eighteen board and then we can scrap that column if we see that those numbers are like super off. That would be in five years.
Well, we would have a good like milestone there to show.
Yeah.
Would there be increase? I can provide that for the next board packet and that way you guys have that data when we start going into budget discussions and presentations. All right, your street fund, your sales tax revenue is below the street fund again, but I think it's part of previous discussion. Your expenditures in the street fund right now are only about ten point six percent. So we are below. But that is variable and it's still early in the year.
Yeah.
It's already a street work.
Too, or is that just operational? Operational.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
That's what I was thinking. It's really early in the year and a lot of the capital expenditures may not have started, especially if we have contracts involved. So I didn't implement that on this report. I was going to wait until. Quarter two. Okay. Yeah. I'm sorry. I have one more question regarding the revenues fees. I know that property tax revenue for the town is very insignificant, however, with the recent changes to the assessed rates and things. I would be curious to know what the impact is for our community relative to that as well.
Okay. When would that be visible? Would that not be till next year?
Yeah. So it'd be good to collect the data from this year to see what that, because a lot of communities are talking about like thirty to forty five percent increases. I can imagine that. So it, it would just be interesting to see that, that data. Yes. Sure. And, and that's maybe reflected this year and then they'll reassess. And then that's what they, so it'd be good to have just kind of see, sorry. No, it's okay. So in your water fund, your water sales revenue is at about nineteen point two percent. I think the big thing to note here is that the rate increase happened in February. So we're still tracking to see where we're sitting with our water sales revenue and how that's going to be affected. Also, the summer rates are going to be where we really see the jump in revenue.
And the usage too.
So we're not bad considering twenty five percent of the years last.
Not me this summer. I'm telling you. I'm sorry, but I'm not contributing to that fund this year.
And we're still tracking well below expected expenditures. Um, your sewer user fee is about fifteen percent for the year. So again, we're going to watch that and see how this looks mid-year. And your operational expenditures is at eighteen percent. So it's still lower where we're at for the year. Your drainage fund utility fee revenue is at twenty five point two percent. So we're right on par where we need to be. And your operational expenditures are at about eight percent for the year. Yeah, okay, that makes sense. That one's the consistent.
Yeah.
Your park fund, same thing. You're about seventeen point two percent with your sales tax revenue and your expenditures are at seventeen point six percent. So we're still tracking below expenditures in that fund.
Any more questions?
Revenue just comes from that portion of sales tax.
They have, we, you have recreation user fees. Um, there's also. You know, while she's looking at that trustee Gator, I'm totally open to going over like a line by line of all of the accounts with your state actual budget. I guess I would just request that we just have all of that information prepared and are ready to go in advance.
I did ask for that information and I was told to go to the town website and look it up. I requested that information. I was told it's already publicly available. So just go look it up. So I did. That's why I, I did ask the question a couple of days ago. And I was informed, hey, this information, which I think is good, is made publicly available. So our residents don't have to wait for a board packet. They can literally go to the finance website and it's all right there, which is great. So that's where I went to it.
So I guess what, what I think what would be helpful for me as a trustee is what set a standard for what the expectation is of the reporting in the treasurer's report? Like, do we want to do a deep dive into the line items? Or are we looking for just this overview of the funds? Because I'm, I'm definitely up for doing that. I just want to make sure that I'm like properly prepared and ready to have the conversation. So I think that, you know, so that we're having consistent information to review month over month or quarter, quarter, year over year. Maybe setting a standard for what the expectation is of the treasurer's report.
I am totally fine with an overview, but when there are things that jump out like a funding severely under on revenues, severely twenty percent over on expenditures for the year, I would hope as elected officials, we would have some questions about what is going on here? And if it's a matter of reporting, that's fine. Let's fix it. If it's a matter of, hey, we, you know, maybe we overextended ourselves in some areas, we need to address that. That's part of our financial responsibility. So when there's things that they're all in line with what I expect, I don't necessarily feel I need to go in there. But when I see something where it's like, hey, we're twenty percent over budget for the year, you know, maybe a twenty percent of the first quarter. Let's keep an eye on it, but twenty percent at the end of the year. That should trigger some questions. So when those things come up, absolutely, you know, if everything's online and on board, there may not need to go into the detail.
Would it be fair to maybe request that if there's a specific category that is showing that the year to date percentage is trending to go over budget? That they could, maybe that's like a trigger for staff to know that they need to provide a little bit more detailed information on that.
I think that would be very wise, yes.
Okay. And that's, yes. And now that we've got some, hopefully we'll have some good data moving forward, especially in twenty twenty four. I think the information we're getting, what we're doing in twenty twenty three is pretty solid. But we do, we, we see the discrepancies in twenty twenty two. I talked to Public Works for a long time today about what I was seeing based on you asked for the information and Jerry copied me on it and like, oh my, I guess I did realize this was all here. Let us take a look, see. And I started looking, I hopped over there and they're like, oh my God, this doesn't make sense. So they're kind of going through their data. Like I said, we're talking about it as a leadership team tomorrow to start going through it. I will report back to all of you because it is, it's, it's disconcerting.
Yeah. And this comes, this all comes back to what we have on our strategic plan. The letter that came back from the finance committee earlier this year of, we need to have good financial controls. And that has been something that's been a concern with the audit is like, you know, how money was being transferred here and there. And that was a practice for a long time. But that's not a good practice because there were not good financial controls. And that is part of that is when we, that's again, the buck stops with us, right? It, it doesn't stop with charity. It doesn't stop with Patty. It ultimately stops with us because we are the ones who are accountable to the residents who pay taxes to the town to make sure that we have good controls put in place over our finances. And so there needs to be, when we see something that is off, that's why the treasurer's report is important, making sure that we have accurate information. Departments are providing information. We have our audits so that we know the best part of the point of an audit. Excited to get it back is say, where are the areas that we need to make improvements so that we can do that? But then it is on us that when we see something that's not right, we need to ask those questions and get answers. It doesn't mean that there's anything bad necessarily, but we need to know there's a gap somewhere. And we need to figure out where the gap is. Is it in reporting? Is it in, we spent money we didn't realize that we'd spent? That happens to me in my own personal budget. So it's not, but I expect other people to not be like me. But our job is to make sure, okay, we don't continue that process. And so I think that this comes down under that, again, transparency and are we being wise with how we spend our finances? Is it's paying attention to things like this and then asking the questions and staff's job to then provide, go and find the answers and provide us with. Is it paying attention to things like this and then asking the questions and staff's job to then provide, go and find the answers and provide us with.
So moving forward in the reports, if we see something like this, can you provide this information and have a breakdown for us? So we can discuss it afterwards.
I think that flag is awesome to have in general. Um, and it's my understanding from the takeaway from this is you guys are just as surprised on this as we are coming into this situation. So there was a lot of questions through a lot of departments, even us as trustees.
Yeah, it's. And as charity's putting information together and things that, it it is, there is a lag, there's been a lag and we knew that. And now we're starting, now that we're like staffed and things, we we are starting to be able to go back and start looking at some of these things that we should have been looking at. You know, six months ago. So now we're like, oh my goodness, we need to figure out what happened because like I said, public works. What, we didn't go over budget on any project. How did this happen? Did something get miscoded or something like that? So that's what I'm guessing. Um, I I.
I would also say, I think, um, you know, when I got here in June and halfway through the year twenty twenty-two. None of twenty twenty-two had been reconciled. And so your leadership team was not given those financial statements that you have up on the website. So they could see where they're at in their line items and say, hey, we're gonna go over, we need to maybe make some adjustments or we need to make this communicated. To the town administrator. And so now that we have the availability to provide them these reports on a monthly basis. We can have those conversations and they can start monitoring these funds and these expenditures. So we can be more proactive in terms of communicating to you on how we are managing the money.
So do you feel like you were, like, that's a long time, like to have to go back six months and get that caught up and then we were trying. And trying to stay on top of what you have going on. Where you're at today, do you feel like you are caught up or do you feel like there is still a lag?
I think we have a few quirks we're dealing with, but it's not the lag that. It was when I got here to the point where it would inhibit our leadership team to monitor their finances on a monthly basis. And because we don't have audits done, I don't know what the twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two A J E's are gonna do. And how they're gonna change these reports. Um, so we have to be mindful of that. I don't foresee a whole lot of changes being done. Because of the way we got things reconciled, but that's always a possibility.
When you say quirks.
Quirks as in um, internal processes of making sure that things are getting coded and we have data. Correct the first time. Um, you know, going back and changing GL codes is a pretty tedious process because you have to delete. All of the original checks and then we issue them with the proper GL codes. And that's just how Castell is. So making sure that now that we're fully staffed, being on top of all of those financial procedures. So we don't have to go back and make as many changes. That's the kind of quirks I'm talking about. So I'd be curious, how do you memorialize those financial procedures? Well, now that I have staff, we're gonna start working on internal policies and SOPs. And you know, there's been a lot of meetings with other departments on how we can implement better procedures to make things more efficient.
Do you feel like with the procedures that are currently in place or that have been in place, if there were enough checks and balances with staff internally? Or where do you see there could be improvement on that?
I think anytime you come into an organization, there's room for growth and just learning how to address that. And again, being short-staffed was a challenge. Um, and that's nothing in our control. So I think just starting fresh from this point forward and being able to implement. Those processes will help all of our leadership.
So sometimes in the audits, they look at those procedures and make recommendations. And are there any recommendations from prior years that are. Haven't been followed or that need to be implemented currently?
I would say, yes. I think when you are dealing with a high turnover rate, especially with some front-facing staff. That presents some process challenge. So now that we have a stable front office, that's our starting ground to build up.
So I mean, if there's an area that we were lacking or that we weren't doing, well, I think it's okay to to admit and acknowledge that. And then acknowledge what we're gonna do to rectify it. I mean, would you agree?
Yes.
Is there anything that you want to acknowledge that we should know about, like that we as trustees can do to help? Improve on those processes or provide additional controls? I mean, we have the finance committee that is providing some additional oversight. We've been pretty open about providing like some feedback on what we want to see reported and things like, are there any other recommendations you would have?
I think, um, just for best practice purposes, we might want to implement a P card policy. I think just some internal memorialized cash handling policies would be a good idea.
You know, I have that already. Stephanie says we have one. Cash handling policy? I'm sorry, okay, never mind. I'm sorry, just I spoke out of turn, I apologize.
I don't have any questions.
Sounds like it's a system being built on.
Yep, there is a lot going on.
We got a new person here and she's developing her own ways and it sounds like it's going the right way. So appreciate you.
Yeah, there's been, you know, a lot of turnover. It's a difficult position and I'm sure that trying to carry that torch hasn't been easy.
Absolutely.
She's, she's been working hard, no doubt about that.
I'm extremely grateful that every time I have a question, you can answer my question. So, and that is one of those things where when you walk through and have someone explain it to me. In terms that a financial person understands compared to you explain it to me in a term that I'm gonna understand. As someone who does not deal with books and does not understand a lot of this stuff. Or look at it on a regular basis, other than when we are in our trustee meetings. I feel like you possibly got put on the spot this evening. I'm grateful for the honesty and the answers. But I would love to see if there is things that we need to be doing moving forward. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, like at the end of the day, if there is the anything.
Right, we're here to help you.
Absolutely.
Anything we can do.
Yes.
And as I said, at the end of the day, it's our responsibility. So, and I think that. It was the policy of the last board, we had to deal with water rates and a bunch of other stuff that was really ugly, but we dealt with what had to be dealt with. I don't, I think it's the same with this board. I don't think any of us have an interest in continuing to see mistakes of the past continued in. So especially as we get the audit back, if there are things that need to be adjusted or changed. I continue to come back to, one of our priorities on our strategic plan is the financial power handling our finances. That's like a big deal. We want to make sure we're getting that right. So as we're going through things, I think that's an important part of the process is just letting us know. Working with the staff to implement policies internally, if there are things that need to be adjusted there, if there are things that need to be adjusted at a board standpoint, or we need to work on an area. You know, we we have to know. I appreciate, you know, being able to look on the website and see March's data. I know a big thing last year was, you know, I got to June and I had no information from since January. So we're trying to make decisions on budget and we have no idea what we've spent up to that point. So it's great that, you know, here I am in May. And I've already got the completed March numbers that I can look back on. So that's been huge progress from where we're at. Looking forward to getting our audit back and hopefully we'll actually get some feedback from the audit to say if there are areas that they identified, maybe we don't, we don't see that we need to improve. So I appreciate the work that you're doing.
It just seems Patty's a lot less stressed with you in your position. Yeah. I'm grateful for you because she smiles a lot more when we talk about finances. So. Yeah.
Oh, yeah. That's having, 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 having a focus. Amazing. It has been amazing. We have our hicks. We're working through them.
You know, one other thing I'd be curious to see is what we're able to do on our aging accounts for utilities. Like if we're able to make progress with that with the changes that you've made through the policy or the. We just talked about that.
It is late.
So what the, if we're able to lower that deficit of a hundred and twenty plus days, ninety days, sixty days.
I would say that we found a really special employee in our utility bill.
Yes.
He has the perfect personality for the job. And his experience coming from being a car salesman to now doing a utility billing.
It's not, yeah, it's working really well.
He's not afraid to get on the phone. And so I've given him a lot of projects that. Kind of piled up in the chaos. And he is calling people, he's being extremely proactive. He's seeing that there's an account balance and it's a landlord account. He's calling them and says, hey, you have a balance on here, who's responsible for it? And so it's really great to see not only somebody in that role that can be very analytical with the data. But also has the outgoing personality to not be afraid to pick up the phone and call people.
Get the gap.
And and Stephanie worked really hard in that position because she was very analytical and we're able to identify. A lot of data issues in Castell. Um, and anyone who works in Castell knows that if you put bad data in, you're gonna have bad data out. And so being able to just clean out module by module. Um, and she was able to do that with the utility billing. So she handed him a pretty clean product. That was working much better than it was for her when she started. Um, and so he doesn't have the time of trying to figure out the file path issues and the. Castell quirks that he can focus on the customer service piece.
Awesome. It's interesting how, um, when somebody calls to yell at you about a utility bill and when a man answers the phone, how they. They just respond differently. I mean, they just do. It's, and that was a really good hire in your car, a really good hire. Um, I can, I want to give you a quick update. I have to, um, L C S O meeting on the S R O. How how things are going this year, things like that. Um, they feel. They feel very good about where they're ending up this year with the one S R O. Um, they have not. As of the meeting today, they said they would not be asking for another S R O, but they might change their mind by the time it comes around time for budget. They will have an additional, additional hundred and ninety-eight students there next year when they're bringing in the next grade up. But feel, they feel there were some really good lessons learned this year. So I know we had talked about that this. That this presentation was going to potentially morph into talking about, you know, L C S O and S R Os and things like that. So I wanted to let you know that. We have also, today we also met with the Wellington Senior Resource Center. Um, their grant funding is short. The grants, the grant funding that they received from Lammer County is about half of what they expected. And that's happening across the board. Um, most of the money from the grants was going towards nutrition as opposed to transportation. I told them that one of the items, one of the goals for the Board of Trustees was to have a joint work session with the senior group. I told them I'd get that scheduled before budget season. They let us know how much money they're needing. Kelly will actively start searching for grants. She's asked for their grant, grant contract. So we know kind of what they're, how it all looked. And so Kelly will start looking for some grant documents. But I told them that the Board of Trustees, I hope I don't, I did not speak out of turn. But I said the Board of Trustees really support this, this group and want to make sure you're successful. So we will find a way to make it work. So we'll prepare them with some talking points and data, hopefully, you know, as opposed to just, you need some money. So we'll, we'll hopefully come prepared at that point in time. So I'm looking probably at August, maybe. Depending on how agendas look in July, perhaps it's a work session after a regular meeting if there's a short, there's a short agenda. So I wanted to get you updated on that. So there will be an ask for somebody. They are funded through February of twenty twenty-four. So we, this will work well in the budget cycle. Wanted to let you know that. That just happened today. Both of those items.
Anything else budget-related questions?
Nothing for budget.
On to our thing.
Yeah, it's, that is just a document. Um, I like to have that information in there. That's for the public, that's for you all, just so that you. People have an idea of those topics you guys will be talking about over the next couple of months. Um, on the second page, it talks about, um, other activities that you might be attending. C M L's listed on there, which of course we'll post and publish from, or post on our, on the website and the town hall. So, yeah, that's just information for you all and it it does change. Nothing set in stone. We sadly, I wish I. Ethan's working really hard to make his plan better. So well.
I love the early packets.
Yeah, yeah, he's.
I will admit to like an additional day of procrastination since I did get that packet early. So. But I love seeing it come in early when I have available time. I can.
Yep.
Sit and read it. So that's a, I'm appreciative of that.
It's certainly not just me too. It's definitely the whole leadership getting on board with it, which is great.
He's the one that's come up with some ideas and wants to make sure to get things to you a little bit earlier and help us try to plan out further. So, so we're not making changes that much, which will be very helpful.
We're gonna get to pack it out Thursday this week.
So talking about posting meetings and things we did, we have put on the outside of town hall and display board while we, we'll be posting agendas outside. That's something we just got to tell today.
There is one thing I had a request on before we go. Sorry, guys. In talking to one of the planning commissioners in a casual conversation. Is there a way to set up planning commissioner emails? Where they can receive the emails directly that they're looking at and reviewing. So when someone's airing a grievance or wants to comment on anything in some way. Then they can also receive in the moment emails where they're not getting a packet full of a hundred and twenty pages of comments. That they're.
Like as opposed to going, it going to their personal email would just go to.
It goes, so everything is screened. So in that way, if they have something they're going to be hearing, Patty, you know that you can go in and shut. Do our responses saying they received your email but cannot respond on this information, blah, blah, blah. Is there a way to set that up?
Let me look into that. I just made myself a note. Let me ask.
Got it.
Yeah, I, I've seen that in other municipalities, not, but so I am included on your email as like the staff person. And I don't know if adding Cody to a planning commission, he already gets a gazillion. I don't like adding. But it might be nice, especially, it might be nice for them to have a separate email. I can look into the cost and see how that might look. Um, but in most municipalities, there is the board, the elected officials and final commissions generally have separate. So we'll take a look. Thank you for the idea. I will report back. Yep. Another.
This is, wanted to put this out. So if you can post this, so Betty got the group together on May twenty-second. That's a Monday, it's six thirty at the Boys and Girls Club. So did want to, I will be going, wanted to send a presentation to the mayor and Patty, but also if any of the other trustees would like to just come in here from the members of this kind of community. They are getting the group back together on the twenty-second at six thirty at the Boys and Girls Club.
I'll send out a calendar.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like, wait.
Also, the Boys and Girls Club is the school-based healthcare discussion, the review. Some very alarming survey results from our students and parents. And kind of the overall support for a school-based health system out of Wellington Middle High School. So if you want to learn more about that, what they're, what they actually will do. What the concerns were or how much it's planning on being utilized with some surveys. June sixth, Boys and Girls Club. Five thirty.
And Boys and Girls Club.
Does anybody want me to add that as an? I will not be here. Don't worry about that one. I will do the Boys and Girls Club. I will do the Betty. Sorry, it's getting late. I'm getting hungry.
We've been here later.
I know this, I know discussion was a little tense tonight, but this is what, this is what you guys do.